Good morning. It's Wednesday, May 9. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public and all of our committee hearings are open to the public. It is my understanding that we now have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Hello, con gusto, you know, card in this England or Garcia Weezer correct score Korean, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Wesson, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Correct seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alicon moves and Mr. Weezer seconds. So I would like to direct the members' attention to the agenda at this time. Let's, Mr. Clerk, let's go through the agenda, starting with the first section of items.
Mr. President, items one through five are items known as for public hearing. We have yet, there are no cards in for those matters, sir, one through five.
Members specials on items one through five, specials on items one through five. Okay, let's open the roll on these items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
What's the next section?
Items six through 19 are items which public hearings have been held. Mr. President, the Office of Finance recommends that item 11 be received and filed in as much as this matter has been resolved.
Okay, without objection. Mr. Corrects.
Like to call item six special.
Members other specials. Mr. Parks?
I would just like to call seven special just to register a new vote.
Other specials, members?
Six, 16.
Is that Mr. Englander? Item 16 held special by Mr. Englander. Mr. Reyes. 14 by Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, that date would be Friday, May 11th. If Mr. Reyes would like to continue it to Friday, May 11th.
All right. Any other specials?
Mr. President, before moving on, would you like to continue item 14 to Friday, May 11th without objection?
Yes.
Very good, sir.
Okay, so now on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, that brings us to, I believe, section 20 through 29. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Items 20 through 29 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. LeBange.
Thank you, Mr. President. 23 and 24 special.
Mr. Parks?
21 special, then we can tie that to number six and hear it at the same time. I'm sorry, yeah, number six.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
25 special, please.
22 for Mr. Rosenthal for the minority motion.
Okay. Mr. Parks for Mr. Rosenthal on item 22. Any more specials? What about cards from the public?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 21, 22, 23, 24 and 25.
Okay, so on the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, item 30 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Until I have a discussion with Mr. Englander, we will hold that item on the desk.
Very good, sir. On the continuation agenda, item 31 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Specials member on 31?
For a week.
Okay, let's, on that item, let's open, oh. Mr. Clerk has been a request to continue this item for one week. That would, two, two weeks?
Till Tuesday.
Till Tuesday.
Mr. President, Tuesday is May 15.
Okay, without objection. So 32?
32 as well. 32 as well.
So you want to, Mr. Alicon wants to continue item 32 as well until Tuesday without objection. And what day is that?
Again, that's Tuesday, May 15.
On Mr. Rosenthal's birthday.
Mr. President.
He'll be the same age as me, Mr. Clerk, 39 and holding.
Mr. President, item 30, for clarification, item 31 has been continued till Tuesday, May 15, without objection. For item 32, we should, that matter, 10 votes are required for consideration for that matter. We should first bring that before council. So 10 votes are required for consideration for item 32.
So we need to vote on it before we can continue it?
You can, without objection, you can bring the matter before us.
So then, without objection.
And then 32, you can now continue without objection to May 15 as well.
So it will be continued. That brings us where?
That takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, let's start out with Mr. Rosenthal. We will go to public hearing, but we're going to take care of three items. First, we're going to do two presentations and then Mr. LeBange will bring up items 23 and 24. Mr. Rosenthal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gary, come on over too. Mr. President, I have a gentleman standing next to me that is truly a treasure to Los Angeles's journalism, someone who has made a huge difference in informing, educating and connecting people to the issues of the day. For 25 years, he was a TV broadcaster, Channel 2, Channel 4 and Channel 7. He reported the news. And when he reported the news, you got the texture and the context and the facts. But as television became more about making money than really doing the news, all of a sudden television became soundbite journalism. Just turn on your tube at night and what do you get? If it bleeds, it leads. And after about 90 seconds, oh, we go to a commercial. You never even get your brain focused on an issue because it's all quick and hard and frankly, most of it is negative. And then comes the commercials to make the buck. So the American people are not as educated and informed and connected to the issues that they should be in a democracy. And as we talk about the riots 20 years ago, and we talk about what happened and where are we now? Well, one of the local radio stations, 89.9, right?
That's correct.
KCRW. That's right. The news director here from KCRW, they brought Warren Only to the radio and said, "Well, why don't you put together a show and let's really talk about that issue, what's going on right now in parts of our great city?" Well, that show continued for 20 years. When I was driving yesterday, I turned on the radio and there was Warren Only again, doing the kind of show that people deserve to get in a democracy. You can finish your sentence, you can finish your thought, and you can learn something. And Warren Only has every point of view. He doesn't cut people off in mid-sentence to express his own attitude or opinion, which is what all these television stations do. It's about them not facilitating an informative discussion. Look at all those cable channels where you learn nothing, but you see people screaming at each other. Sure, the LA Times with Zahnheiser and others do long columns, good stories, and you can read it in the Times. But when you turn on television, you turn on radio, it's all about soundbite journalism. So Warren Only during the riots got on the radio and continued for the last 20 years. You turn on your radio at night and what do you get? You get real information, real facts, you learn things, you connect with issues, and it helps you in this democracy. He's truly a treasure and in my opinion, a journalist of great note, someone who is making a huge difference. So we are presenting him a certificate from us, and it's to Warren Only, and it is just what I said. I don't need to read anything. I can just hand it to him and say, "Bless you for everything you do for all of us in this democracy." Say a few words.
Thank you, counsel.
If you could just wait one second, Warren, I'd like to call on Councilmember Garcetti, followed by Councilmember Zion, followed by Tom LeBange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I feel like there's, between the two of you, you've produced more content on Los Angeles and the issues that affect Angelenos than probably any two individuals. Now we have one who's producing content live here every day on Channel 35 and Bill Rosenthal. But Warren, you have continued, you know, to be the tent pole for the city, for our journalism in this city, for our thought in this city, for opening up, quite frankly, space that has almost disappeared. As you very articulately said, Bill, you turn on, whether it's Fox or NBC, no matter what your political slant, there's a premium now on shouting and not on listening. And I think my favorite thing that I ever hear you say is, "Well, what about that?" Somebody says something and you always make sure that the other side has the chance to actually respond before, that's called dialogue. But before the things become lies that are put out there, before people give soundbites, you force people to answer the challenges of each other. And in some ways, you're almost this seamless person in between who barely asks anything but accommodates the space for people to talk with one another. And in a city that is so often, after the riots, we were asked, "Well, what do we do now?" And your show came about as part of that, your original show. And I think at that moment, a lot of people said, "Well, we just need to talk to one another." And we saw how superficial talk can be, but we also saw how deep discussion can be, how deep it can be to look into ourselves, look into our souls, ask ourselves who we are as a city. And when we look back and reflect 20 years later, where are we? I would say we are such a stronger city and one of the main pillars of why is standing right before. So congratulations on this benchmark. It's been a pleasure. Don't go any easier on any of us. Ask us, "What about that?" Your opponent just said you're a lousy SOB. Will you please respond? Congratulations. Thank you, Warren.
Mr. Zion. Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Warren Only. My career with the police department and your career go way, way back. I remember when you were doing stories, NBC, Los Angeles, NBC Channel 4, for many, many years, and then switched over to the radio. And one thing, the concise reports, when you were a television broadcaster and now in radio, how you dwell down and get to the point. And in every single time that I've been interviewed by, you call back and you say, "Thank you for the interview." Seldom does anyone ever do that. But you always show appreciation and call back and say, "Thank you. Appreciate that opportunity." And you're just a class act in Los Angeles media. I want to congratulate you. Bill Rosenthal, my seatmate here, who comes from the news world, the industry, from media into politics, to bring you forward is a real tribute to you and for Bill to be thoughtful to make that happen. So congratulations, many, many more years of health and happiness. But you are a legend in many, many people's minds. You bring forth information that they have no idea exists, and you continually transmit that information. So a pleasure to see you here today. I haven't seen you in person in a while. We spoke on the radio a number of times, but you're looking good and God bless you. Keep on going strong, Warren Only. Thank you very much.
Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Good, good move right here. 20 years plus, Mr. Zion, what you said, Mr. Garcetti. I just flash Warren, I think of Hugh Howser. Hugh Howser worked at CBS, and he left commercial television to become California gold. And he is the voice of all that's history. You're the voice of all that's thought, and you left commercial television. And I don't know if anybody put you and Hugh together, but there was a great transition there. Just as I look at you and know in our brief conversation, we talked about who are the smartest people, Mr. Zion, in Washington, D.C.? Of all the people in Washington, D.C., who are the smartest people? If you want to know what's happening in Washington, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the taxi drivers. Why? Because they listen to NPR. And that's the truth. They're the absolute truth. And so I just wanted to say, Warren, congratulations to you at KCRW and all your whole team. You do make a difference and you give voice to people, which is so important in our world. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Warren, thank you very much. I wanted to rise to express my gratitude for your continuing to teach all of us to be civically engaged, to be probative, to be analytical, to be factual, and to push people to continue to pursue whatever their truth is, however they define it. But to put it out there for public consumption is a lost art, and I'm grateful that you continue to push the boundaries so that as we look forward to these kids, we talk about the kids coming out of Annenberg, they can take it to the next level through technology. But thank you for where you've taken us and where you will continue to take us.
Warren, the mic is hot.
Mr. President and members, I thank you all, and I thank especially Councilman Rosenthal, who came from the same business that I'm in before he decided to change sides, as it were. I see that this is unanimous, which I presume means that you'll all be available to come on the program, even when it's inconvenient, even when you don't really feel like it. And I look forward to getting that kind of access. So thank you very much for that implicit promise. I covered the city council on television a lot. We used to be here much more often, I think, than television stations are now in the 70s and in the 80s. And I have to remember that when I was here, first of all, I felt it was an honor then to be able to report to the people of Los Angeles about what was happening in these chambers. And it's a double honor consequently to be standing here and to be recognized by the council. I, when I was a reporter, would look forward to the award period as a time when I would be utterly bored and very impatient and wish that the people would stop droning on so that I could get on with my business. So here I am, and I now recognize the great temptation that there is to harangue a captive audience of elected officials. I'd love to do it, but as a token of my gratitude and an expression of how strongly I feel, I'm going to spare you that and say I feel deeply honored. Thank you very much, and please come and be on my program in the future.
Thank you.
And as people know, my colleagues know especially, Warren, I happen to have the pleasure of having some hens. They're all organic. Herb likes turkey eggs, but you're getting a turkey egg plus this too, so that you can eat nourishingly, and that's from the heart to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, you're giving away my turkey eggs.
That's right. One of the great treasures of LA, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Parks, are you ready? Okay, now we'll have Mr. Parks for a presentation.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Representative Cesar Portillo from the Child Guidance Center and his other members that are here, and also Jose Luis Leyva from Alafia, a mental health institute to come up. Today, colleagues, we're going to honor a variety of children mental health organizations because this week is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day for 2012. It reminds us that with the help of caring adults and effective programs, children and youth exposed to traumatic events can recover, build resilience and succeed in life. Fellow federal authorities report 60% of youth aged 17 and younger have been exposed to crime, violence and abuse, either directly or indirectly, including witnessing a violent act, assault with a weapon, sexual victimization, child maltreatment and dating violence. Research has long demonstrated that strong connections between adverse childhood experiences and chronic illness later in life. Whereas Duke University recently found that the DNA of a 10-year-old who experienced violent in their young lives shows wear and tear normally associated with aging. Research has demonstrated children and youth who experience trauma are able to recover with the support of positive caring adults who provide structure, comfort, guidance and praise, especially when caregivers recognize early signs of trauma in children and seek assistance from community resources.
The Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic is also known as The Clinic and is a recognized leader in the provision of trauma-informed services to children and youth ages 0 to 25 with a staff of compassionate professionals offering behavioral counseling that empowers children and youth to get on track to success, to reach goals in school, build healthy relationships and enjoy emotional well-being. The clinic has partnered this year with local businesses in Los Angeles and the free Spanish-language publication El Clasificado to raise awareness throughout Southern California about the impact of child abuse and the importance of praising children. El Clasificado is joining the clinic's annual Praise a Child in May campaign by engaging its 1.5 million readers in a contest that builds adult skills and opportunities to praise their children throughout the month. The Alafia Mental Health Institute is also here with us and has provided access to mental health services to children who have been identified as having mental issues to decrease placement disruptions and increase stability and functioning of children. So today, by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council and the mayor, with the Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic and the Alafia Mental Health Institute, in declaring today, May 9, 2012, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles. And with us today, as Mr. Parks said, is Cesar Portillo, who will say a few words, along with Martha De La Torre, and then I think they're joined by Melvin Ortiz, Jimena Olmero, Betrice Coleman Sweet, Carolyn Wang and Jose Luis Leyva, who is a member of the Alafia Mental Health Institute, if they wanted to stand up here with us. So first, we'll hear a few words from Cesar.
Thank you, Councilmembers Parks and Perry, Council President Wesson and Councilmembers for declaring today, May 9, Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles. My name is Cesar Portillo. I'm Vice President of Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic. Today, we join with advocates across America as part of National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, as federal agencies join with local advocates to focus on the impact of trauma on children and youth and to call for action. Federal authorities report more than half of all American children and youth, 60%, have either suffered or witnessed one of the following: a violent act, assault with a weapon, sexual victimization, child maltreatment or dating violence. In the city of Los Angeles, that 60% translates to over half a million of our own youth who have witnessed or suffered such violence or abuse. Another way to look at that number, imagine Dodger Stadium filled to near capacity, and happily, that's a little bit easier to do this year, at 52,000 people. Now let's imagine 10 Dodger stadiums nearly sold out. That's how many kids in our city have been exposed to trauma from violence and abuse. And with that picture in mind, imagine if we did nothing to help those children. A recent study by the Centers of Disease Control in California gives us a pretty clear picture of what happens when trauma is not treated. The CDC worked with Kaiser Permanente in San Diego to survey Kaiser members who were getting comprehensive physicals. And the survey asked the participants about adverse childhood experiences, like those I described above, childhood experiences of abuse, neglect and family dysfunction. They found those who suffered multiple adverse childhood experiences had dramatically increased risks for health problems ranging from substance abuse, heart disease, depression and death. Those studies also found that the more adverse experiences of trauma and abuse in childhood each individual reported, the higher his or her risk for major health problems in their life. Let's go back to the image of the 10 Dodger stadiums. Without diagnosis and treatment for childhood trauma, the CDC study points to a very high likelihood those kids will suffer from lifelong health problems in addition to the anguish and pain of the trauma itself. So what's the solution? What can we do? Every good public health model focuses on prevention, detection and treatment. The same with mental health. We have to do more to prevent trauma and build resilience in our youth, to educate adults to detect undiagnosed trauma that may be at the root of a child's anger, dysfunction or academic failure, and to get kids who are exposed to trauma into treatment. In terms of detection and treatment, I'm happy to report that Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic's behavioral health professionals will work today as we work every day to help those children already exposed to trauma. Our team worked with children ages 0 to 25 and their families to recover from trauma and to build resilience, to get on track to success in school and relationships. This year, we'll work with 3,500 children and youth in our communities in South LA. And in terms of prevention, we recognize the very high likelihood children and youth will be exposed to trauma. And perhaps the best way to blunt the impact of that trauma is to work with adults to build self-esteem and resilience in children and youth. So the clinic joins with local merchants throughout South Los Angeles in putting up Praise a Child in May posters. But this year, we're very, very delighted to be partnering with El Clasificado. El Clasificado reaches 1.5 million Los Angeles and Southern California residents through Spanish language. We work closely with their staff to develop an interactive promotion for parents and readers to explore in May, designed to encourage adults to build childhood resilience through praise. Through a word search contest focused on positive phrases adults can use with children, readers are submitting completed puzzles for prizes designed to promote family interaction, including 100 Ways to Praise a Child magnets. Later this month, we'll launch an educational infographic with El Clasificado on trauma, understanding it, detecting it and getting help. We're honored to be joined this year by El Clasificado CEO, Martha De La Torre, and her creative team, who donated their talents and skills to this year's effort. Ms. De La Torre is leadership as Vice Chair of our clinic Board of Directors, has always been generous, and the team's effort to support children in our community is making a tremendous difference. We're also proud to have with her staff, and I wanted to introduce Ms. De La Torre to say a few words.
Thank you, Cesar and Councilmen, for recognizing this very important cause. My name is Martha De La Torre. I'm the founder of El Clasificado, and we founded it to help Latino families. I was inspired to create El Clasificado, to provide something free that could have helped my parents when they arrived from Ecuador in the 1950s. They wanted us to go to college. They wanted us to get scholarships. They wanted us to get healthy. They wanted us to participate in programs, but often because they didn't speak English, they didn't know how. So that's what El Clasificado does, and we're so happy this year to partner with the Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic on not only reaching with our 1.5 million readers in print, but also online, because believe it or not, there are 500,000 Latino visitors going online, searching in Spanish and searching for help. They're always looking for ways to be healthy, ways to help their children. And we're happy for this partnership. And I'd like to, if we have a chance, to show the puzzle that we've developed. It's going to be an online infographic, and this is for 100 Ways to Praise. It's called Sopa de Letras. It's called Sopa de Letras. We discovered that this is one of the most popular ways to communicate, educate the Latino families. They and their children do a word search puzzle, and we have words like magnifico, impresionante, gracias, fantástico. These are words that sometimes our families don't use enough, and making it interactive like this, in print and online, helps them realize this is fun, and these are words that they should be using in their daily life. Thank you for the recognition today. Thank you for the staff, and thank you, councilmen, again, for recognizing this great, important cause.
Jose Luis Leva will now say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Jose Leva. I work with Alafia Mental Health. I'm a case manager. We've been helping youth for several years now, and we look forward to continue to impact our youth and help our youth as much as possible. Thank you.
No, thank you all very much. Just give them another round of applause.
On behalf of the council, we'd like to give Jose recognition for the work he's doing in South LA, particularly in 8th District, and also, we're fortunate enough to have two Child Guidance Centers in 8th District, and so we wanted to make sure that they also were acknowledged.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. We're ready to take items.
We're going to do, Mr. Clerk, items 23 and 24 combined, quarterbacked by Tom Labange.
All right, members, this is an item. I ask for your attention in your seats, if we could call the members to be aware at this time we're taking these items. Mr. Clerk, you want to read them into the roll? Please.
Item 23, motion, Labange-Wesson, relative to the construction of the California High Speed Rail project. Item 24, consideration of resolution, Labange-Caretz, relative to the city's position on the development of high-speed rail in California.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, we have Dan Richard, who is the Governor Brown's appointee, Chair of the High Speed Rail Authority, also, as well as Hassan Ekrotad, our very special Southern California Government's Director for the -- key for the region, as well as others at the table, for a quick presentation, and then I hope an affirmative vote. I'm going to turn it right over to Dan Richard.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. Mr. President, nice to see you again. Members of the LA City Council, it's an honor for me to appear before you. I know you have a busy schedule this morning. We appreciate the consideration of this resolution. Mr. President, if it's your pleasure, I can quickly review where we are on the High Speed Rail Authority plan. Councilmember Labange. So let me -- where am I pointing this? Which way?
There it is.
Members of the council, to remind you, in 2008, the voters voted for Proposition 1A, which was the manifestation of many, many years of efforts on the part of high-speed rail. Just to remind us what the vision of high-speed rail is in California: it's to connect our great cities with a very fast, ultra-modern system. We're talking about fully capable 220 mile-an-hour-speed trains that are electric, they're clean, and the law itself requires that we be able to provide service that goes from Los Angeles Union Station to the Transbay Terminal in downtown San Francisco in 2 hours and 40 minutes, and we will achieve that goal. The first phase is to connect Anaheim, Los Angeles to the Bay Area. Next phase is connect Sacramento to San Diego. We know the reasons for this. A lot of times, the debate about high-speed rail treats it as though this is a kind of a luxury for California. We don't believe it's a luxury for California. With the population growing in our state, we have to determine how we're going to move the millions of people who are going to be here over the next decades around, and our transportation systems are already overburdened. The waste of time and effort and fuel and traffic is well-known to everybody, and one out of every four flights from Los Angeles to San Francisco in that corridor is delayed. It is one of the busiest and certainly the most delayed air-traffic corridor in the nation. And this is the reason why a modern train system is very, very well-suited to California. Let me talk very briefly about what is in our business plan that you're considering today. We can build high-speed rail in California. We can build it in building blocks, building it in segments, building only those pieces that we have funding for. And the most important change that we've brought to this, which is why I'm so pleased to be here with our regional partners at SCAG and LA Metro, is the realization that high-speed rail has to integrate with our existing transit systems, and you've done such a tremendous job here in Los Angeles of building up your rail and other transit systems, and we need to be connected to those. What we tried to do in this plan was to be realistic about the costs and the ridership. That is why you've seen some of the numbers climb in the ways that you have. We've been realistic about the inflationary effects and so forth, but we still believe that even with those costs, it is more than worth it to build high-speed rail in terms of the benefits it will bring to our state, and the fact that to meet the same mobility needs with 2,300 lane miles of freeways, more runways, more airport gates would cost us even more as a state and as a society. We've been questioned on many things, but we believe, and we've gone back and looked very hard at ridership and the alternatives' costs, and we believe that the fundamentals of high-speed rail in California are sound. Even with very conservative ridership assumptions, we're looking at 29 to 43 or 44 million riders per year. This is actually low compared to systems that we've seen around the world, and the capital costs, as I said, to accommodate our growing population through alternatives would be much higher. The most important point I want to make is that the law requires that we operate this system without a subsidy, and we believe that that will be achieved. We came out with our draft plan. We told people that it could cost up to $100 billion over the next 20 years. People said that was too much. We went back, and we've looked at ways to try to bring those costs down. Our revised plan, I'll leave this for your consideration, but basically, at this point, we are at the point where we can begin construction of the high-speed rail system in the Central Valley at the end of this year and keep building until we reach the San Fernando Valley. And, members, within 10 years, we believe that we will be able to have high-speed rail trains that go from Merced to the San Fernando Valley, where they will connect with your MetroLink system here. In addition, we will be building elements of the system north between San Francisco and San Jose. By 2028, we should be able to have the full system in place for a one-seat ride from Los Angeles Union Station to downtown San Francisco. By working with our -- and let me say that, as I said, we have to do this without an operating subsidy. In all of the cases that we've looked at, this system, once built, once the capital is expended, on a going-forward basis, it should pay for itself, as every high-speed rail system in the world has been able to do, once the capital is expended. We've been able to bring down the cost of the high-speed rail system from the $98 billion to $68 billion by using the so-called blended approach. We have realized that we don't have to build a new set of tracks everywhere, from San Jose to San Francisco. Building our own new set of tracks there would be close to $20 billion. We can share the tracks that are there. We can do the same thing, working with MetroLink and you between LA and Anaheim, and this is how we've been able to bring the costs down to a number that is still large but is much more doable. And finally, in terms of what this plan means for you, if you think about how long it takes right now by public transit to get from the Los Angeles basin to the San Francisco area, if you tried to do that by train now, it'd be nine hours. We're talking about 2 hours and 40 minutes. If you tried to do it by car, it's over six hours. So this will bring great mobility benefits. It'll tie our communities together. And in addition, the last point I want to make is that the legislature in Sacramento has before it the governor's budget request that we move forward with the first use of the state bonds and federal money. But also embedded in that request is $950 million of bond money for interconnectivity to systems that you have here. It's money for LA Metro. It's money for MetroLink. It's money for the LoSan Corridor system, and that's now part and parcel of high-speed rail. And so, members, I would just leave you with this thought: what we've tried to bring to this is a sense that high-speed rail is not a separate, standalone project.
I'm sorry, Mike. Just interrupt for a second. Can we have the council just quiet down a bit? The officers are reminding you to bring down the volume. Too many conversations on the sides here. Please, just give us a full attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to conclude, our view now, the governor's view and our view, is that high-speed rail is not just a luxury. It's not a standalone system. It is part and parcel of an integrated rail transit system for California that is not only going to provide a tremendous opportunity for intercity rail, it's going to make our freight rail system more efficient by separating passenger traffic from that in certain parts of the state, and it's going to connect to and build on our very critical regional rail systems that serve tens of millions of people, including here in Los Angeles. Members, thank you very much. I'm pleased to answer any questions you have.
Dan, as you do, we're going to ask from the Southern California Association, Governor Hassan Ekrotad, give us a quick, brief report.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Labange. Good morning, everyone. I'm here representing the 6th County Region of Southern California, and this is a great city. I am here urging you to support high-speed rail moving forward, and this man next to me, Dan Richards, have changed the discussion of how this system moves forward. Recently, at SCAG, we signed a memorandum of understanding with High Speed Rail Authority that involved nine agencies. That memorandum said, "We're going to bring a billion dollars to Southern California to reinvest in our system so we can connect to high-speed rail." Let us keep our focus in the great vision of connecting California urban areas. This system is a necessity. SCAG stands with high-speed rail and with our partners here in the South. I urge your support today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ekrotad. Councilman, we do have about 10 cars.
All right, let's take a quick public hearing on that, for those who support.
We will move forward then with public comment. We have with us Ron Miller to come on up.
Good morning, council. I'm Ron Miller, council rep for the LA Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. The council represents 140,000 craftsmen and women, and of that 140,000, about 18,000 are apprentices from 14 individual trades. The vast majority of these apprentices went to high school in LA and Orange County. Currently, the trades face unemployment figures in the 50% range. With this recession, we have been hit harder than most, with a lot of our members struggling to keep their homes due to the fact they've been out of work for more than a year. In Los Angeles and Orange County, we are the construction workforce. We build everything from apartment houses, hotels, football stadiums, hospitals, and modern transportation systems. We have the highly skilled workforce, and with our apprenticeship programs, we have the foresight to put training at the top of our list to maintain the skills necessary to build the infrastructure that will last for decades and meet the needs of California. A visionary in the past was Governor Edmund G. Brown. In the late '50s, Pat Brown had the foresight and political fortitude to preside over the last great expansion of infrastructure in California. He oversaw the creation of modern freeway system, building of dams, waterways, and canals, and the great university system that we have today. It is with great pride his legacy lives on in his son, the current governor of California. And we are hopeful that the city and the governor has the foresight and political fortitude to keep this high-speed rail alive and help California retain its competitiveness. It is important to plan for the future and relieve the overcrowding of our cities and freeway systems.
Thank you.
And at the same time, get our men and women back to work.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll go to the Valley for Doug Arsenault.
Good morning. I'm so sorry. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Doug Arsenault of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I'd like to first thank the council for this opportunity to speak remotely from Van Nuys. The accessibility is critical for the San Fernando Valley, and we hope that you keep that in mind in your budget decisions. As for the issue at hand, FICA strongly supports regional connectivity, including the California High Speed Rail project. It is no secret that our city's population growth has caused our freeways to become unyieldingly congested and our airports to become constrained. We must give travelers the ability to consider other modes of transportation, particularly mass transit opportunities that are environmentally conscious and allow for more efficient use of work time. The high-speed train systems will alleviate our congested air and highway traffic. As our city and region faces increasing travel times and rising fuel prices, we must invest in options that reduce traveler costs and increase access to and from the Los Angeles area. It is worth noting that we are in particular support of the Burbank Airport Regional Intermodal Center and the Palmdale MetroLink Station. We strongly urge you to support the High Speed Rail project, as its future benefits significantly outweighs its initial cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenault. Mo Hayes, followed by Arminik Norjanian. Mo Hayes? Oh, you're -- you had a card, too?
Is this on? Okay, I'm Mo Hayes. I'm the Chair of the High Speed Rail Task Force for the LA Chamber, and we put together the task force. It was a coalition of business, public agencies, rail advocates, to urge the authority to bring the first leg of the system to the south, to the Los Angeles area, and we are glad that they decided to do that in their revised business plan. When Dan laid out his revised business plan to our task force last week, they were all the same points that we had made in our initial report. The initial operating segment that runs from Merced to Burbank will complete a vital missing link in the statewide rail system and provide beneficial linkages with the highest population center and the largest economic contributor in the state. Early investments will allow our businesses and communities in the region to feel immediate benefits to current rail system. We urge the state legislature to move forward with release of the Prop 1A bonds so the High Speed Rail Authority can begin the local investment program in essential links, including the regional connector. The Chamber applauds the LA City Council for considering a resolution this morning to support the revised business plan for the California High Speed Rail project.
Thank you. Mr. Norjanian, you know the rules. You suppose I'll already be at the podium.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelins. My name is Arminik Norjanian. Actually, as a liberal Democrat, I do endorse the Resolution 24, where they actually establish city positions on the development of high-speed rail in California. Of course, we need that high-speed rail take off as soon as possible, you know, because all those commercial needs of Californians, you know, include, you know, faster, more rapid system of transportation. But actually, so far, it says that what I've been bothered by this particular statement was that the business plan, California High Speed Rail Authority, had a revised business plan, which includes extending initial operating section into San Fernando Valley by 2022. It's way too late. I mean, we're supposed to start with operation maybe next year or something like that, but if initial operation section starts working, you know, by 2022, it means it will take so much time, you know, and this project will actually, not necessarily, will survive that much delay, you know, as it intends, you know, to have, you know. And I urge very much state legislature, you know, Democratic Caucus of state legislature to... to craft legislation where we'd actually expedite construction of a high-speed rail in California. Also, we need also backup by significant donation funds, you know, and increase some, you know, taxes on those oil produce manufacturers, at least 50%, you know, to cover those expenses. Otherwise, because we have budget deficit and we need to cover up, you know, our projects, you know. And I believe that this high-speed rail will become reality.
Thank you. If I could get Mr. Herman. And Mr. Herman, I just can't make out the first name you put on this, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Members of the city and those representatives from the governor's office, at a time when there's such a great deficit in the state of California, yes, a monorail sounds of the best way to go about it when it cuts into savings and cost. And yes, a speed to go across from one point to another pot, A to B, like a ray on an arrow, it's really not cost-efficient. Take a ride with me on Boyle Heights on the Gold Line, and you'll see that only on peak time, that rail is full to capacity. But throughout the day, to me, it was an inefficient waste, but a very good project because we burrowed through the historic area of Boyle Heights. So I say to the governor's office, and I say to you, council members, a monorail would significantly save lots of money for not just the city, but for the golden state of California. At a time when people are being displaced from their homes, at an economy that is spiraling out of control, we can improve California, but we have to improve it in a way that benefits not just the above population, but let's look at the minority population that need that transportation as well. And let's include the people with disabilities. How is that going to affect them? I know many times federal government leaves out people with disabilities when they put in these large expanded projects, and this is one that's going to cost into the billions of dollars. So please, keep in mind how it will impact not just the city of Los Angeles, but how it will impact the golden state of California. And unfortunately, I'm against it. And yet, let's look at this insidious, impossible, deceitful way of saying it's going to do good for the communities.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Sacks.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I agree. The first speaker mentioned that it's not a luxury for California. No, it isn't. It's a luxury for special interest groups. Building it in segments, which segment gets the 220 mile-per-hour high-speed rail? The first segment, remember, we had meetings at SCAG. They talked about ARTEC as being construction in Orange County, which is the terminal for high-speed rail. But Orange County's not getting high-speed rail. The first segment, and nobody knew with all the legislative analysts and all the people that you have in Washington, how many people in the council chambers knew that the first segment was going from, going to be in Cochran, in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of nowhere, California? Let's go visit, what's his name, in the state pen. And now the Chamber of Commerce just mentioned that the first segment would go from Merced to Burbank. No, 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 no. The first segment, according to the government, the federal government to spend the money, it's going to be in the middle of California, nowhere to nowhere, and it's not going to be operational. Let's talk money. When it was put on the ballot, $42 billion, $92 billion, $66 billion. Door number one. Door number two, where's Alex Strickbeck? Well, let's make a deal. I don't know. Third base, remember that? Systems around the world, how much do the systems around the world cost? What's the price of a ticket? All this information, can you say Metro? Go Metro! I have a shirt that says, "Go Metro." Well, it really doesn't, but go to a meeting, you'll see what it says. Building in segments, just like MTA in L.A. And Mr. Reyes, the Construction Authority, you know all about that. Here's the man right there. He puts you on it. They have a booklet. Without even being in legislation, you're on a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Now I'd like to turn it over to the members. Mr. Rosendahl, you're on the cue.
Thank you, Mr. President. A question for the gentleman that spoke first, Dan. What's to hold up in Sacramento in approving the bonds that the people obviously approved when we voted for 1A?
Councilmember, at this point, the legislature is considering it, and, you know, obviously, I think they have a number of budget issues up there. There have been a lot of questions about high-speed rail in the past, but I think our new business plan has received great positive reviews from a number of even former critics. And so our hope is that they will act on this as part of the budget by June.
In saying that, again, tell us what happens in 10 years, over a 10-year period?
Well, over a 10-year period, several things will happen, but literally 10 years from today, if all things go as we hope, we will have the first operating segment of high-speed rail, 300 miles, that will go from the Central Valley, from Merced, all the way down to the San Fernando Valley, where you'll have MetroLink connections into downtown and to Anaheim. At the same time, we will have worked with our partners in Southern California to be upgrading MetroLink, to be upgrading other systems, the low-sand Amtrak service, and will be upgrading systems in Northern California, including the rail networks there. So we'll have a much stronger network. By five or six years after that, we should have the first Phase 1 built, and you'll be able to go from L.A. Union Station, and I commend all of you for what you've done with that, all the way to downtown San Francisco and watch your Dodgers play in San Francisco in two hours and 40 minutes for what is $83 ticket. So we're pricing our fares at about 85% of the discounted Southwest airline fare between L.A. and San Francisco. So it should be very economical for everybody.
Beautiful. Hassan, SCAG, explain SCAG and your role in all of this right now and your timetable and what you'll do in that.
Yes, sir. SCAG represents the six counties in Southern California, and we are totally in support of the new business plan. We're in support of making sure this great city gets what it deserves. We are in support of the great vision that we have. SCAG stand with its partners, Metro and eight others, and sign an MOU to bring a billion dollars to upgrade the systems. The city will be better for it. The region will be better for it. So I hope you support it, sir.
And Metro, quickly tell us how your role plays in all of this and how it complements the other two.
Thank you. We've been a strong partner with the High-Speed Rail Authority throughout the process. We've worked with them on developing this business plan. This business plan is a very effective move forward to bring California and Los Angeles back into the future and the cutting edge of technology. When we combine what we're doing with high-speed rail with our America's Fast Forward projects and our Measure R projects, it is about regional connectivity. And the advanced investment that High-Speed Rail is talking about and we're talking about in Southern California also creates a system of safety that we can start instituting here in Southern California for grade separations of these corridors and start doing some capacity improvements and start moving forward on projects that benefit Los Angeles now and create the jobs that we need now as we move forward. This is very effective.
Mr. President, it all makes sense, and as Chair of Transportation, obviously, it's a no-brainer from our end. We have to get it all complementing each other, just like I heard the various groups are. Will the governor provide the leadership with the legislature to make sure it gets released? Or what can we do with our resolution and other things to see that that happens?
First of all, I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to Governor Brown. A lot of people told him to walk away from this, and he stood up and said, "No, high-speed rail is important for California's future." That is the thing that I think really started to move this in a different direction. The governor is very engaged in this, but I will tell you that we would welcome the expression of support from this body because right now our legislators are considering it. Many of the transportation leaders are from this region, and hearing your voice in Sacramento will be very, very helpful to us as they deliberate on including this in the budget by this June.
And last comment, Mr. President, is the federal government's role in Fast Forward has been a dramatic plus. Our president and others have strongly supported it. We obviously want those 12 projects happening simultaneously to get us out of the gridlock. How does the federal government play into this?
Councilmember, as many of you know, Secretary of Transportation Ray LaHood came to California for three days specifically to talk about high-speed rail and transportation funding. He's coming back to California this week, going to Sacramento to again emphasize how important this is. We have a very, very strong federal partnership. They are putting up the initial $3.3 billion of federal funding, and they've also been working with our regional partners on parallel investments at the regional level. So it's a very strong federal, state, and now local partnership.
And councilmember, there is a lot of places that are ready to take that money if we're not smart enough to move this program forward. We need to keep this program in California, in this region, and not go to the Northeast corridor. We have the second busiest corridor in the nation. I think your action today is a strong voice in moving forward with that program and keeping the money here.
Thank you all very much for your presentations, and obviously, Mr. President, I hugely support this overwhelmingly. We will bring the 21st century to California like the East Coast has done over the last 25 years with their various links of trade.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Englander.
Thank you. And I want to thank SCAG particularly for all their work and my predecessor, Greg Smith, who worked on this for many years. And it's easy to stand up and say, "I support this." It's easy to support this and say in a vacuum, in concept, this is a no-brainer, as Mr. Rosendahl just said. But there's a lot of critics still out there. There's a lot of concern, and the concern, not so much is if we need it, we need a lot of things. But the questions that I get overwhelmingly are at what cost and versus some of the other things that are desperately needed in infrastructure. Our roads are crumbling. Our bridges are falling apart. These are billions of dollars that we're not investing into our infrastructure right now. And some of the concerns and critics that, you know, while this will put a lot of people back to work, so would the other infrastructure projects and improvements that the majority of people will use every single day. I support this because it's easy, like I said, it's easy to support. It makes sense. We should be doing these things. And if we don't start now, we never will start. It will never get off the ground. There's no question. But we also got to balance that with other needs, and particularly, I do want to call the attention to Mr. Labange and Carruth in the motion that says the initial opening section in the San Fernando Valley by 2022 is part of the resolution, which is great that it's highlighted and noted because the San Fernando Valley far too often doesn't get its fair share. And so I absolutely support that. I also want to compliment my colleagues that participate in SCAG regularly, Mr. Reyes, who's there often, Mr. Zein, who's there often, Mr. Labange, who's there often. I ask everybody else to participate as often as they can. I've been there since I've been elected, trying to participate as well because it brings everybody together in the region to make these collective decisions that will forever change how we function and operate as a society. But if you can just address sort of those issues and concerns that we constantly hear on the radio, that we constantly hear in the media, that we constantly hear in council chambers with folks coming up and speaking about their concerns, and from our constituents as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for participating and your compliments. I will tell you this all, and I respect every opinion, but the critics need to focus on the following. California has not had a major infrastructure project for a very long time. Generations from now, if we didn't do it...
I'm sorry. Can we just ask the council chambers if we can keep it? I can't even hear over here what you're saying. And I know the people out there probably can't hear it. Thank you.
I want to thank you for your participation and your comments, but I'm saying that generations from now, if we didn't do it, it's going to look at this generation and say, "Shame on them," because they could have done it at $68 billion and put something for many generations to come. It's going to be much more expensive in the future and much more difficult. Right now, we have an opportunity. We have money on the table, in the bank, from the federal government, and the opportunities are there to create jobs immediately in the worst economies, the depression. Yes, granted, it's a major infrastructure project. Yes, we have a great many needs, but remember, the energy cost is going up. Providing choices for people should be a priority number one. This is another way of providing choices for people, and I think this is one of the best infrastructure projects we could focus in California, this city.
If I might just add, councilmember, I served for 12 years as an elected member of the Bay Area Rapid Transit District Board, so I'm very aware of the critical role that your local transit districts play in moving people around the Los Angeles basin, and I'm very sympathetic to that. But I do want to highlight two points in response to what you said. The first is, by emphasizing now that we're making high-speed rail part of an integrated whole, as we come into Los Angeles, the better we can connect with MetroLink, the better we can connect with the various lines in your new transit systems, we give riders to them, they will give riders to us. Everybody does better. So we have a chance to kind of have a multiplier effect here with this investment. We also have ready federal dollars that are ready to put to work. And as Don Sepulveda from Metro mentioned, we have now these agreements to have early investments, early investments in systems here in L.A. that will build the platform on which we'll build high-speed rail. And that's going to be several billions of dollars immediately in your local transit systems to help with immediate mobility needs while we're laying the groundwork for high-speed rail. So I don't think we need to view this as an either-or proposition. We're very aware of the tremendous needs. We looked at SCAG's regional transportation plan, tremendous needs that you have here. But high-speed rail can be a contributor to those things and not just a competitor.
Do we have anything in the works on studies?
Last question, Mitch.
Last question, and just, and not looking for an answer. If we've got something that you can bring back at a later date, or if you can share with us that's already available, on what those economic benefits, if the billions of dollars of putting those people back to work here, what they would mean here for the region, for the city of L.A., how we would benefit not just from the infrastructure, but financially and economically, how those dollars would actually come back to the general fund, to hire police officers, to fix our streets and infrastructure, and invest in all the things we need to do, and firefighters. Do you have anything in the works?
Yes, sir. We have six economics from snow out in the region putting exactly those numbers down, and we'll be very happy to provide those to you.
Great. Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman. President, first welcome to City Hall. I do know that six years ago, we started having conversations with High-Speed Rail Authority. We had a major meeting over in Santa Monica. It was a statewide conference call. And now we are, and I want to congratulate you on your tenacity. I think you're the fourth executive director going through this process. And continuity is important when we talk about issues that are of concern in every region. So I do believe the direction you're taking in 2012 business plan is a good one. It's a direction that brings in MetroLink. These are partnerships we need to have. But in terms of this blended system, I want to know how our decision will be made when we talk about improvements of the MetroLink corridors under this new plan. When we speak to you, and that's one question, and have to answer it right now, perhaps we could get something written back to us that explains how that will happen, so we can document that. The other question would be the, looking at other agencies, and this is what I find very interesting. In Northern California, there's a contribution or a participation in reducing or changing the system to electric, electric rail. And I look at Southern California, I look at the pollution caused by diesel trains and engines, and have we had a cost analysis done regarding how we can electrify the existing rail corridors in L.A.? Because that will go a long distance, especially in the corridors where the rail line is running through. You have these huge maintenance yards where diesel trains sit idle, and they sit idle on the lines as they queue up to the rail line in very dense parts of the city. So we have all this diesel spewing into the environment. So my question is, can we put that in your radar to see if we can look at those improvements? And then lastly, is looking at the approaches to Union Station, do we see any changes that are going to occur, given this new plan? Especially our concerns on how it's going to enter into the area of the Union Station? Because much of the approach will be impacting the neighborhoods that are District 1, District 14, District 9. So I'd like to get a feeling for, or a sense of how these changes will occur. So I'd like to get a feeling for, or a sense of how these changes will occur, and will the existing environmental document, will they incorporate in the final analysis these, uh, revisions and extended timeframes? So there's a lot of questions there. I know, I only give so much time, but if you can answer any one of them as, as much as you can, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, council member, let me just start by, first of all, thanking you for your transportation leadership, which we appreciate, and, and actually, for all three of your questions, uh, from the High-Speed Rail Authority point of view, we are really, we are really deferring to and following the lead of our regional partners. They, they are really the ones who are, are the ones in the leadership position on that. So we want to respect their thinking and, and follow their lead. So, Mr. Sepulveda from LA Metro, uh, and SCAG can a- answer your questions better than I can, but we're really, we're really respecting the local decision-making in that respect.
I guess I can take a, a first stab at, at some of these, and if I miss one, please let me know. Uh, you had talked about how the projects would move forward on MetroLink and how it would be decided which projects. We are working closely with MetroLink. Metro is a 50% member agency of MetroLink, so we're very close, I meet with MetroLink regularly, to talk just about these project priorities and where we're going to go. We have just completed a study of the Antelope Valley Line, which is the corridor that High-Speed Rail is going to be traveling on for advanced investment, and try to part, start prioritizing advanced investment opportunities along that line. So that effort is an ongoing effort, and that would continue as we start moving forward. Over the next year, we're gonna start advancing some of these projects into the preliminary engineering and environmental stage in order to start moving forward with these things so that we are ready to grab, to get additional funding into Southern California for federal grants. Regarding the electrification question...
Let me just pause for that one.
Yes, sir.
On the MetroLink, can you give us contact information in the MetroLink site, given that there's a huge MetroLink maintenance yard in my district? So we know when these decisions are being made, we understand how they're being made and why?
Yes, and, and we're very aware of the, of the sensitive issues that are ongoing at the central maintenance facility, and, uh, MetroLink will address how they're dealing with that. I will tell you that MetroLink is going to Tier Four or working to upgrade many of their vehicles to Tier Four diesel locomotives, and that is the cutting edge of technology, and they're working forward on development of that to address many of those diesel issues that you were talking about. One of the challenges of electrifying Southern California in the MetroLink system is there's, there's 512 miles of, of MetroLink right-of-way that they operate over, which is a significant cost. And so, that has to be taken into consideration as you, as you work to start to do that. And there's also our freight partners that we run with along these corridors that will not be electrified, so we have to work through that. Union, the Union Station is a very important question. The area around Union Station is important to Metro. As you know, Metro purchased Union Station last April. We are the owners of this, which actually puts us in a unique position to develop Union Station and blend it in with the urban fabric of Los Angeles. We have actually started an urban, uh, a master planning effort for Los Angeles Union Station that does just that. So we keep the historical context of Union Station, yet make it a place that's inviting and, and, and moving forward into the, into the future as we move for, for high-speed rail. We're working with High-Speed Rail in developing their way to get into Union Station. We're making sure that their unions, their entry into Union Station is not obtrusive, it's not, it's not invasive, but actually blends in with the whole Union Station concept and also that of the surrounding area.
And with the help of my colleagues, we put together a task force of the city family so that we can respond to the EIR, so we can understand the link between the master plan of Union Station, all the millions of dollars invested in the Alley River Corridor, and the impacts of, of that whole dynamic. So, uh, I can't take up time on this, on this, on this moment, but that's a very important follow-up question.
It's a good, very important issue.
Yeah, Mr. Reyes, that's a good thing we could move forward in the future. We're having a special, uh, task force on that. So you have any other questions there?
Yeah, well, I think he has one more to answer.
Real quick, here we go.
Which is the other one that I have?
The EIR. Changes in the EIR, will this new revised plan, will we see changes in the EIR, given the change in timeframes and/or procedures?
Um, no, council member, the, uh, the, the business plan is sort of separate and apart from the environmental process, and so the environmental process is proceeding as it was proceeding.
Okay. If there are gonna be any changes, will we be notified as to how the EIR gets impacted?
Of course, yes, and, uh, I, we're very pleased with our working relationship with the local agencies here. We work closely with you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We have, uh, two cards, Mr. Sax and Mr. Herman. Thank you very much.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sax. And thank you, sir, for, for some of your commentary. I appreciate the fact that you did do some work with BART, so, because you're getting some input from Metro, so let me give you a little input from Metro, too, because I can't understand how you would take advice from them. You might have read something about the subway to the sea, the subway that the mayor wants to finish up, but there's been some controversy now with Beverly Hills because they don't want the new route that's going under the high school. The original route was gonna go along an earthquake fault line. So why was the original route put along an earthquake fault line? Ask Metro. They spent $7 million on experts for the soil discussions on tunneling in LA, and they still put the subway line along an earthquake fault line. So now we have another legal affair that's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars before it's settled. Maybe you heard of Metro's tap card program? BART has a tap card program where they use paper tickets. Metro spent $190 million and the gates still aren't locked. Maybe you heard of the link to the airport? BART goes to the airport. Metro had a rail plan, the Green Line, couldn't be built without the construction authority. But the Crenshaw Line going parallel, going south, north to south, whereas the Green Line went south to north, the Green Line couldn't be built, but the Crenshaw Line can be built without the construction authority. More input from Metro. And finally, construction authorities in and of themselves. State legislation was passed to create the Blue Line Construction Authority. Do you know that the Gold Line, the LA to Pasadena Gold, Blue Line Construction Authority now owns property that was bought with public funds, but the construction authority was never created through state legislation?
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Thank you. Mr. Herman.
Listening to this, um, new idea of a speed rail, do we know that speed kills people? Can you think of the tragedy of that speed rail coming out in our community and destroying blocks, neighborhoods, residents, civilians? So let's talk about how this $83 is it per day to travel back and forth on this speed rail? I thought public transportation was for public to enjoy commuting from one area to the other, going from point A to point B. But apparently, that cost doesn't suffice me, the taxpayer, us, the taxpayers, we, the constituents, constituents in California, because again, we're, we're, we're not including the population of people... Excuse me, Mr. Reyes, continue. We're not including the people, a population of people that need to travel from point A to point B. So let's take into consideration what public transportation it is. It's all about money, and money that should be contributed to the people who need it the most. People of minority, people with disabilities, people who lack real service to commute, when they don't have the opportunity to fly, when they don't have the opportunity to drive but use public transportation. Keep into your factor, keep into the measurement of how you're applying this speed rail. Really, is it applicable for today in this time, when there's such a, a thing called a recession that the mayor said we're not in? Is there such a thing that the governor is saying he's not gonna raise taxes? He is going to raise taxes. He must raise taxes in order to bring us out of this deploring lifestyle that you've created by overspending and then not taking into consideration...
Thank you, Mr. Herman. That completes the public comment. I don't have a card. Hold on just a second, please. Hold on just a second.
You lost mine yesterday.
Please fill it out afterwards. Michael, carry on.
Yes. Yeah, mine is for the labor unions. I'm a union representative, so I understand that. What are you guys doing about getting the people here? If you look around this horseshoe, no one's paying attention. Our council members aren't paying attention, they're reading the paper, so I'm glad you guys are. What about the people that live here in Los Angeles? How many jobs are you gonna create for them? I understand we're gonna build this, but we bring in people from all different parts of the country that aren't working to work on these projects because they specialize in this field. About apprenticeships? MetroLink doesn't have any apprenticeships for any, any people in the city of Los Angeles. We've asked, I've asked my council member, how many people from CD14 have they put to work in any of these projects? None. We are taxpayers here, we run this city, we live in this city, we have to put up with the construction and everything else, but yet we don't reap any of the benefits. We need something to come back to the, the people who live here. We have people who are underpaid, who are underworked, who need apprenticeships. We have people who are hardworking and people who don't get a chance, because everybody that comes in that you want to bring in, sir, are not from the city. I've sat here, year after year, and heard people come in from Orange County, from Riverside, from San Bernardino, from all throughout the state and the counties, but very, 1% are from this city. And yet you come here and you want to ask, our representatives aren't even paying attention. So I ask you, what are you gonna do about hiring some of these people here who bear the burden? Who can't afford $80 to go to, to San Francisco? Who have to walk? Mayor wants to raise parking tickets, they can't even pay those. Yet, the wealthiest say, oh, let's not drive our Mercedes or our Rolls-As up there, let's just take, uh, uh, MetroLink, which we all have to pay for. It's paid for on the tax, on, on the backs of us, while you guys profit from it. Shame on you.
Okay, thank you for the public comment. That completes the public comment. Thank you for the presentation, Dan Richard. Uh, members, there's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
13 eyes. Fourth with all that, thank you. Please tell the governor I said hello. Thank you all very much. Now we're gonna have a very, very, very special presentation by Mr. Reyes right now. I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes right now.
Thank you, Cons-President. Let's ask, um, Mr. Gary Moore, if you can join me. Colleagues, uh, this is, uh, five years since we approved the master plan. The master plan came to the council back in 2007 of May. And colleagues, I can share with you that up until that point, there was a lot of work being done, a lot of fundamental analysis of how we can work with the city in such a way where we could realize its full potential, knowing we have an amazing asset called a river. It took some time to convince people that we even had a river, but once that attitude changed and people realized what a tremendous natural habitat this actually offers to our great metropolis, but it also became, uh, a method by which we can address multiple purposes, multiple goals on one side. When we started, we looked at four core principles that's at the heart of all the projects. Revitalize the river, green the neighborhoods, capture community opportunities, and create value. Now, creating value is critical today. We look at our budget deficit, we look at economic development, when we look at how our grandchildren will live in the future, when we talk about the condition of our waterways, how we treat our urban waste as it continues to flow onto the streets through our trash, our debris, how we're impacting our coral reefs, our beaches, our ocean. All of these ecosystems are impacted by the river corridor. So in the last five years, we have been able to put forth through the master plan of the river, a number of studies, projects, programs, spread creative partnerships among city departments, public agencies, river, and environmental advocates. The river plan, principles are not embraced by city departments involving water quality and stormwater mandates, river sanitation, water resources, Department of Water and Power was critical and one of the catalysts at the beginning of providing the grant funding for this master plan. The Alley River Bike Path and the recent tiger applications with DOT, parks, systems with the Department of Recreation Parks, the CASP, which is a, uh, specific plan for a pocket around downtown, our river improvement overlay that the planning department has been working on tremendously, along with the specific plans. And leading the charge has been a gentleman next to me, Mr. Gary Moore, who has, uh, done a yeoman's job, uh, in his own effective way, been able to pull together a tremendous amount of energy to create this focal point. Deborah Weintraub and Kara Armstrong, Dr. Armstrong, who has been able to put together a whole vocabulary behind the river, uh, has introduced a sense of spirit as a team. They put together an amazing effort. And I will not forget, uh, the folks on my staff, Lupe Vela and Joe Soria, who have also been major stewards throughout the years in making this happen. In developing other entities to help manage the river, the Master Plan called for Real Estate and Economic Development Corporation, which was created in 2009, the River Revitalization Corporation forming the entrepreneurial arm of the management team...
Very good.
The city, county, and federal government forming the government arm with the River Cooperation Committee, and we are in the process of forming a foundation to focus on the social, cultural, and artistic aspects of the revitalization effort. The plan has received national attention and major designations for future funding opportunities. The presentation will give you a, a few slides, a view of some of the tremendous work produced by the River Master Plan as our guidepost. The plan has paid for itself, staff has actively brought in local, state, and federal funding to leverage on various projects. This is a legacy project for all of us. We can be proud of the work accomplished, funds received and national attention on Los Angeles due to the river work our study has delivered. I want to thank the team, the group, for their hard work, and if I need to stake, take a step back, when I was asked about this work, folks said, why are you doing this? You're not gonna be in office with term limits, you're not gonna see much of this. What was important to me, quite frankly, is that we put down the foundation, we build the plumbing, if you will, that connects funding sources from Washington DC, with a lot Lucille Robi-Allard, who sits on appropriations, who's been a major force in DC, along with Senator Barbara Boxer with the Word of Bill, we put key pieces in place, along with supervisor Gore Molina and the other supervisors, and we've been able to put together a team that sees real results, and Mr. Moore will give us some of those, uh, insights. So colleagues, this impacts eight council districts. Different districts have benefited, benefited from this work at many different levels. But more importantly, it's a regional issue, it's an issue that allows us to connect silos. I'm hoping that Department of Transportation, with Secretary LaHood, along with the other secretaries who have expressed an interest, will see the wisdom in leveraging these resources in the future. So with that, I'd like to introduce...
And as we do, Mr. Reyes, I just wanted to thank you for that. I'm gonna make a correction, Mr. Clerk, I made a mistake. This is not a presentation, this is item 28. You want to just call it correctly, Mr. Clerk?
Item 25, called Special for Cards.
All right, and this is 25, very good. And before we go right to the city engineer, the very special city engineer, the very special councilman has some special guests. Please announce them.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President, and Mr. Reyes, you're incredibly great, and what you're doing with that is phenomenal. But I want to recognize, in the room right now, the third graders from Village School in the Pacific Palisades. Stand up and wave, you'll be on TV. Stand up. Thank you all for coming and seeing democracy in action. Bless you all. Make sure you go up to the tower and see the top of the great city and everything else. Thanks for being in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosendahl, thank you. They'll see the benefits of this great work that Mr. Reyes is leading on. Mr. City Engineer, Gary Lee Moore.
Good morning, council members. It is a real pleasure to be here, and thank you, Councilman Reyes, for that great summary. I'd really, uh, like to be joined with some friends here, some of the river family, all the department reps that are here. Would you please come forward, sanitation, engineering, DOT, please come forward. Thank you. Okay. Um, I'm joined here today, uh, also by Kelly Bernard, the Director of Economic Development for DWP, who did fund this study for us. The first photo of the presentation here, can we go to the presentation?
There it is.
There we, whoops, we'll back up one. You know, this first picture here, you'll see, uh, Mal Controller Gruel, Councilman Garcetti, Mayor of El Regusa, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Perry, and Councilman Labonge. I think it's important to show them here because in 2005, it really has been a grassroots effort, and this really shows them their commitment. The master plan was adopted... The master plan was adopted five years ago today, and it really took a vision from this council and from the mayor to be here today. We've had such a great partnership in working within all the city departments, and especially want to thank Water and Power again for the funding, working with the Army Corps and the county. You know, we've had many, many milestones, and every day, the LA River family works together to make these milestones happen. I'm not going to go through the list here because it's better to show it with pictures, I think, but it's really important to talk about how we've made a national prominence and local through this master plan, it's really paid off. Today, I Googled LA River, and there was 2.9 million hits, and lariver.org is the first thing you come up to. And what you see in front of you is CNN did a national stories about future cities, Los Angeles was one of the future cities, and they highlighted the Los Angeles River revitalization. Time Magazine did a whole photo exposé on the river, and I think it's important to note on the Times, on the Time Report, the word redemption. Next, our local Westways, our AAA magazine that many of us receive, called it the ripple effects, that the river can be so much more and is becoming more, along with Sunset Magazine also covered the river, just a few examples. Also, academia has really embraced the river. This 400-page textbook for GIS uses the LA River for their case study. All the local universities, my alma mater, UCLA, USC, SciArc have all done studies, including Harvard. You know, national is so important, and something happened big for us in 2010 when Administrator Jackson from the EPA joined our elected officials in declaring the Los Angeles River as traditionally navigable. This has really opened the doors for the imagination of everybody here. Nancy Sutley from President Obama's office is here to join, has come out here many times to support the river, and it's, the LA Day of Service for the mayor has joined thousands of Angelenos to focus in on the river. One of the most exciting things that have happened is we're actually in the river now. And in this slide here, you can see Councilman Reyes down there boating in the river along with Colonel Toy. The partnerships on the bottom, and that's a real theme throughout this presentation, is it takes partnerships. All of us at the table, those that are not at the table, it's really made this possibility that we're kayaking in the Los Angeles River. Just a few months ago, we were very honored to have Secretary Ken Salazar come, joined by Congresswoman Lucille Roy Ballard, along with Congressman Adam Schiff. Once again, Congress and the president have taken notice of the river, along with our friends at the Army Corps. When people ask, what have we've done, once again, we've completed projects, we've got projects in construction, we have projects in design, and we definitely are going after more grants. And the next slides really kind of highlight some of those. Here you'll see Councilman Zine at the groundbreaking of the West Valley Bicycle path that we're putting in along the river.
A Blues Brother Without the Hat.
Yes. Here we open, Councilman Reyes and Garcetti opened up the, and Labange opened up the Elysian Valley Bikeway. We have the West Valley, like I said, is in construction. DOT has applied for a major grant of $13 million to do more along the LA River. And I want to bring back one more slide on there, we actually removed some concrete along the river, a real milestone for all of us involved in this. Next is about people, you heard us talk about people. You know, the LA River Corp started cleaning up along the river, the Revitalization Corporation and Omar Branson has been established with the help of the CRA, the LA County, LA City Cooperation Committee, it goes on and on, the partnerships are here, they're here forever, they're not going to be, they're not going away. Parks, I saw John McCrory, the great leader of the Department of Recreation and Parks, he's been a great partner in this entire project also. We just opened the North Atwater Park, our first park along the river, and once again, it took everybody pulling on the rope to make this happen, and our friends in sanitation The Army Corps and working on the feasibility study, another great partner, but I also want to talk about the Department of City Planning, Claire Bowen and Michael Legrand. The Los Angeles River Improvement Overlay District is working its way through, that will reach out not just on the river but into the communities, making a change along the course of the river. A few more slides here. Next, as I mentioned, Adele Hoshgalil's here for the Bureau of Sanitation, but the River Impact Development Ordinance, you know, making sure that we keep the stormwater on properties and before it gets into the river so we can make great changes. Rainwater harvesting, it's really, we know the importance of looking at the river and outside the river and the changes we can make. We've instituted a great project in Councilwoman Jan Perry's district, the South Los Angeles Wetlands, nine acres transformational, that will clean up the South LA stormwater for a very great area. Finally, money, 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 and money, and money, and money, and money. It takes money to do this. And your commitment and your motivation, and well, along with the mayor throughout this entire process, it has, you've kept the focus on the river through these tough financial times. We've partnered to bring in money from the state, the federal government, and our own Proposition O over almost $25 million. My last slide here are some of the words that other people have used to describe this revitalization. Redemption, rev up to ride the river, the ripple effect, resurgence, it couldn't have been done without the people that are sitting with me and that are in the audience and also that are watching. Ramel Pasquale from the mayor's office, Deanna Gomez from the mayor's office, Lupe Vela and Jill Soriel, Claire Bowen from Department of Planning, Michelle Mallory from DOT, and of course, my own staff, Deborah Weintraub, Chief Deputy City Engineer, Michael Alfaut, and the great and outstanding leader, Carol, Dr. Carol Armstrong. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, very special there. We also had just Saturday our river run, the first annual river run, where over 500 people ran from Las Feliz down to Marsh Park, and Dr. Armstrong was there to help lead the way. But we have a few other speakers queued, we'd like to call out Mitch Englander from the northwest San Fernando Valley.
Great, thank you. I want to thank you for the presentation, this is very exciting, but I really wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Councilman Ed Reyes on this. You know, I was really fortunate that, that I worked for a council member who wanted to get involved in a very sexy issue and make a name for himself in trash. And we look at all the things that Greg Smith did, and what he used to always talk about wasn't the things that he did or why he was doing them for other people or for the environment, he actually spoke about Ed Reyes. And he spoke about somebody who gets involved in things because they're passionate, for the right reasons, for the community, and knowing that you're probably going to start something, you're not going to see through fruition, you're in terms of getting it to complete 100%, even in your lifetime, but you're doing it for our children and our grandchildren. And there's been so much effort, and it's so wonderful to see that Full Law and all the organizations that have come together because of Mr. Reyes's leadership and bringing people together, but he didn't do it alone, and Gary, you've been terrific, and so many others, and have done so much work, and there's a lot more work to do. But it's really exciting to know that my kids and my grandchildren will be riding their bikes down the LA River, and that I was able to witness a true leader that has brought people together to do this, so I just wanted to say, God bless you and thank you.
I would just, from all the staff, I do want to call out Councilman Reyes also, I appreciate that, Councilman Englander, because he does motivate us. We all know that we're doing it with less resources today, and we know that without leadership and passion that the councilman has to motivate all of us to continue to push, I just want to thank from all of us, Councilman, your leadership, thank you very much.
Let me just call these three cards for public comment, Mr. Herman, Mr. Sax, and Mr. Norjani. Public comment, are they here? Herman, you have one minute, Mr. Herman, one minute.
I'm aware of it, thank you. This is a great project, this is something that we all waited for, but at the same time, we have environmental issues. We have the nonprofit Enrich 1A Environmental Mental, and they talked about plastic bags, how they destroy the environment, let's keep that in mind. Now let's go back to this point. Yes, I have always been in love with the LA River. When I bike ride and I jog back and forth on it to Hollywood Way and back home through Las Feliz, Mr. Garcetti, and it's very enjoyable, I'm glad to see that there is some improvement there. But there has been some minor problems when it comes to cost, and I really hope there is a measure factor when this idea is put in place. And to conclude, don't forget public comment, public comment, you have people here who wish to speak on items of very important issues, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sax, well, Mr. Norjani, you're here, so you go, and after you will be Mr. Sax. Will you go, you go, Mr. Norjani, you go now, I don't see him.
Good morning, city council members, good morning, fellow Angelenos. My name is Arminak Norjani, I'm a liberal Democrat, actually I endorse this Resolution 25 introduced by councilmembers Western Reyes and who is there, but actually requires various city departments to generate a report on the Los Angeles River revitalization master plan. Five years of achievement in recognition of fifth year anniversary on today, on May 9, 2012, which is also a victory day. Well, actually, of course, city of Los Angeles, city government needs to generate a plan, you know, five-year plan, not only of achievement, but five-year plan, you know, to develop, you know, Los Angeles River, you know, to make it actually a waterable river, you know, waterable river, you know. So that right now, we have Los Angeles River, we were empty riverbed, you know, throughout whole downtown Los Angeles, center of the city of Los Angeles, it goes without any water whatsoever, you know, and most of the time, you know, some jokers, we've been joking that fish should bring, you know, it's on water, you know, to the city. But actually, if city government engineers decided to put some water into an empty riverbed, it would be even better idea. For instance, we could actually turn on electrical pumps, you know, and pump that ocean water, you know, from ocean into a Los Angeles empty riverbed, it would make some difference. You know, and I believe that achievements should be recognized when we actually actual and do exist. But talking about achievements, where most of the city folks see the empty riverbed, it sounds a little bit, you know, of a derision for me, you know. And, well, actually-
Thank you. Mr. Sax, okay. Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to thank everybody too, and I want to also thank Ed Reyes from Cypress Park, and you see things as a young person living near the river, as I did living in Silver Lake, and what it all could be. I also want to thank the late, great Mayor Bradley, in 1988, there was a state representative who called for trucks on the LA River, and that kind of galvanized a lot of people, and a man came along who's a poet named Louis McAdams, and he started as a friend of the Los Angeles River, and now it's grown into a very much a committed group of people, and there's nothing like a river. A river is a lifeblood. 230 years ago, 44 people walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to what would be to the banks of the Los Angeles River. That was our start, now we're going to restart again. I especially want to thank the Bureau of Sanitation, because both, I'm older than Ed, but when we used to play in the river as children, the water would dry up in the summer, it would be challenged, challenged water. Now, both the Tillman Reclamation Plan and Glendale, Los Angeles, the water comes out, and there were no trees, there was water back then when I was young, but there were no trees because the water was so bad it killed the trees. But now the water that the city does change and reclaim now goes to a better use, and that's why it all comes back. And to speak for all the birds, there's nothing like the birds of the Los Angeles River, it's so important. And I also want to speak too, because Hollywood uses the river in so many ways, they're going to see it in a positive way now. Many of the films that have been used has just been what they call the wash. Now they'll see the real, if you take a tight shot like a cinematographer, they'll capture that. So this is a good day, Ed, and more needs to be done, and your comment when High Speed Rail was here, I just hope we could have people see the river. We put a protector up for the bikeway along the river, which is real important, where motorists don't get to see the river as much, but that's, safety's first, it's so important. And Adam Bischoff, is that the name, yeah, was a young boy from the west San Fernando Valley riding a bicycle and got caught in a wash, and that helped get the fire department involved for safety. So so many things are good, I just wanted to stand and thank everybody here, and especially Ed and Mr. Garcetti, working, what we did in North Atwater will transform all of North Atwater. Thank you very much, go LA River.
Mr. Reyes to close.
Colleagues, I just rise to thank all of you for your hard work, my colleagues who have been consistent in the committee, in their attendance and support, Councilman Labange, Councilman Garcetti, I appreciate your being there. It's been a long haul, but I cannot overemphasize the amount of heart, the heart that's there from the employees, the river family, they have stepped up. I still remember the first meeting we had up in the tower, and it was kind of like a chuckling event, but when we got the page on the budget, that first year, I knew it was real, because then that started galvanizing level of attention when Water and Power stepped up with the first $3 million for the master plan. From there, it just served as a magnet and pulled together many other resources. So I want to thank my colleagues for this, for your hard work, your tenacity. I really believe that if we were more strategic in how we manage our assets, our land, especially along the river corridor, that we could stimulate private investment, we can create jobs, and imagine the jobs we could create if the federal government could see the advantage of taking the cement out. The thousands of jobs they created during the depression back in the 30s when they put the cement in, 100 years later almost, we can use that same opportunity to create jobs by taking the cement out. But we would do it in a smart way, in a way that effectuates environmental change that is natural to the habitat, protects species, but more importantly, create jobs for our youth, create a link with education, with the high schools that have been built along the corridor, there's now an Alley River High School adjacent to the river. So generations to come will have a major laboratory to work with that's going to stimulate knowledge and hopefully new methods. So thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you for your heart, and all of you for your great, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. No one else is in the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, thank you, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Englander, is item 16 a quick item?
Yes, very.
Okay, then we'll do item 16, and after that, we'll do general public comment. Mr. Englander.
If I can ask all the council members' attention for a moment, I'll be very quick if, once I can get their attention. I just want to make sure everybody's listening. This is an item that-
I'm always listening.
I know you're listening, I just, I just, because all these items are actually going to come, every committee is affected by this, and these are low dollar amounts, but in the end of the day, they're big dollar amounts, and so that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention. We have constantly, we have folks that want to contribute, foundations that want to give us technology, and they usually come through in the form of iPads for PD, cell phones for various departments, computers for other departments, and there's a tremendous cost for us to service, maintain, pay the licensing fees for those, and there's never been an evaluation. We just accept these donations and let the departments have them, and then ITA is stuck paying the bill, and ultimately, we are, and ultimately, the taxpayers, and oftentimes, it's not even technology that's compatible with what we might be doing or not. This came up in the budget hearings that I brought up the other day when ITA was at the table. And what's before us is to accept a number of iPads again for LAPD, including their notify link software they're going to have to pay for, $30 a month, that's $360 for each iPad. LAPD is willing and can absorb this into their current IT budget, and so I ask for you to accept this, but to keep in mind that anything that comes before us in any committees, we first ask ITA to weigh in on costs, whether those donations are free or not. And real quickly, my daughter years ago had a- And real quickly, my daughter years ago had a friend who came to her and said, "We're getting rid of our pony. Would you like it?" And she came home and she said, "Dad, my friend's going to give us a free pony." And I said, "No, no, she's not. You're not getting a free pony." And she said, "But it's free." I said, "The horse is not free, honey. We got to feed it. We got to put it in the stable. We got vet bills. It's not free." Well, it's the same thing with technology. We got to look at these things a little more carefully and sharpen our pencil. And so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Englander. On, were there any cards on that item, Mr. Clerk?
No. I don't believe so, sir. Public hearing was satisfied in committee.
Oh, right. And let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Now, we'll go to general public comment. Henry Marine, Arnold Sacks, Arminak Norrjanian. I want to see you.
This one is about, I guess, process for establishing Barnes, that house.
Good morning. We all heard about how pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered. All right, anybody paying attention about pigs and hogs? Mr. Wesson? All right. The principal and interest-giving shelter for hours of government services shown in Hackley MOUs must be provided as a government benefit. As you know, Hackley and COLA government checks and statements from trusts account for every hour I held public office since 1976. However, since hindsight is 2020, we know that management established intent to use public funds at will, which we found out is contrary to law 410-11 IRS Code, and how 10% was skimmed and held in a reserve fund, and how 100% of the benefit sum was invested in union trust plans by accident. So another thing, the mayor, it's illegal to hold employees locked in temporary positions under 410-411 IRS Code and 202 through 204 of the IRS Act. So it would behoove you to start legally working here. And I don't seem here, Mr. Me, Mitch Englander, he hit the ground, he looks like he can count. And Mr. Corey's not here. He looks like he can read, write, and count, do real good. So name him over. Can't fool all the people all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Norrjanian.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Nudjan. I'm a Liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. And as such, I run for the City of California State Assembly from South Center of Los Angeles for 59th District, 59th District, yeah, electoral district. I promise to raise taxes 50% against wealthy individuals and oil-producing manufacturers and gas and sand corporations in order to replenish state coffers, in order to have increase, to increase social spending, to have social programs up and running. While proposition all failed, City of Los Angeles should actually raise taxes against those wealthy homeowners and also oil-produced manufacturers, it is $2. And 49% of Angelinos support raising taxes against those oil-produced manufacturers. Also, I propose to create California satellite cell phone service for rural forested areas, territorial water of California shores, in order to cover lack of cell phone service in those areas. I also propose to provide six-month free pregnancy leave for all California women. I propose to raise speed 20 miles up on all California freeway and highways. And also, I propose to make same-sex marriage law of the land to uphold the civil rights of sexual minorities. As Proposition 56, excuse me, as Proposition 19 failed last year, and 53% of Californians rejected Proposition 19 legalization of harmful narcotic marijuana, I will craft a legislation to propose a comprehensive ban against so-called medical marijuana dispensary. And I ask City Council members to close down all so-called medical marijuana dispensary to save Angelinos from the curse of narcotics.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Alyssa Oster, Thomas O'Grady.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Herman. Yes?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Ingstrom. I am with the environmental nonprofit in Los Angeles called Enrich LA. I would like to start off by saying that 26 neighborhood councils, including the majority of NCs in Council District 4, have adopted resolutions in support of the Corretts' single-use plastic and paper bag motion. They represent over 1 million Los Angeles stakeholders. Councilmember Labange's motion from last Friday asking for a litter study and a study of SB 219 frankly feels like an attempt to stall the Corretts' motion. We do not need or have time for more studies, nor can we afford more street cleaning. Council President, I respectfully ask you to schedule and move forward with the Corretts' motion as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, aren't we attempting to have this hearing on March 23rd?
Yes, that's, well, I'm not sure the specific date, but March or May, sort of March past...
May. I did it again. I'm trying to roll back the hands of time.
That's coming within the next couple of weeks. I'm not sure if the 23rd is the exact date, but that's coming forward sometimes.
Okay, so within the next few weeks, this item will be discussed in committee. Yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, my name is Thomas O'Grady. I'm the Executive Director of Enrich LA. We're a local environmental nonprofit. Most of we do school gardens and public schools. Bangladesh, China, Los Angeles County, and yes, Ireland have studied ad nauseam the effects of single-use plastic bags, and they have concluded and passed legislation to fix the problem. Los Angeles can ill afford another study to study the amount of litter in this city due to single-use plastic bags. I just spent last Saturday with 10 other parents, and we picked up 15 bags of garbage at King Middle School, Mr. Labange's alma mater, and a lot of it was single-use plastic bags. Councilmember Labange, you deserve praise. You have picked up a lot of litter over the years, and therefore, I respectfully ask you to withdraw your motion to study further plastic bags and to count litter. And Council President Wesson, I respectfully ask you to schedule this, this hearing for the Corretts' motion. Thank you.
No, thank you, and it should be done within two weeks. Mr. Weezer will be the one responsible for setting it.
Very much, Mr. President. You mentioned earlier that it's going to committee. It's coming actually to council.
To council.
We moved it out of committee. We worked on it there, and now it's coming to full council within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman.
Good afternoon, late afternoon. Councilmembers, residents of Los Angeles, take note to how a town meeting is not involving us, and think of where all our resources are going to.
... celebrating with the apparel company its 15th year headquartered in downtown Los Angeles.
We have so many old buildings in LA as well, and they've adaptively reused this building to continue to provide jobs in the 21st century.
But American Apparel...
Companies like American Apparel have a consciousness for who their workers are, to ensure they have safe working conditions, to ensure they have health benefits, to ensure they have a livable wage that has allowed the island immigrants in this country to go on, pursue, and be part of the American dream.
American dream. Councilmembers, are you really conscious about the people that sit outside of City Hall in tents? Are you conscious? What about doll halls from Venice Beach? What about his, his saying about, "We need to provide more for those without"? I'm a strong believer in equality, rights of people, and rights of people, regardless of color, gender, or ethics. We all deserve the time and the moment to be heard, and I want a town meeting in Boyle Heights. Again, I emphasize, I want a town meeting in Boyle Heights. Why? Because we need to be heard. We want the resources that go into Broadway, your expansion on Broadway, to be heard in our community, so we can better ourselves, be a part of that big dream. And consciously, I can sleep on it. But how about you, sirs? How about you? Yes, I'm looking forward to a future, but a future for all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I want Michael Carrion, and then I'll call the last two speakers. Michael, if you could come forward. And sound guy, if you could hold Michael's time. Michael, members, I just want to make this acknowledgement. I have in my hand a document from the County of Los Angeles Fire Department, signed by the fire chief. The County of Los Angeles has a program where they have the department's Medal of Valor Program. So, Michael, before you start blasting us, let me inform the council and to all that are watching, that our own, Michael Carrion, has been selected to receive this award. And let me tell you why. In fact, in order to get this award, you have to attempt to save a life or save a life. And you have to put yourself in peril. Michael Carrion was able to, I believe, and Michael, if I'm wrong, please correct me, there was an accident on a freeway, a burning car. Michael forced the door open and saved the life of a young woman. He's going to be honored Monday, May 21st at 7:00 PM. And I did get the address, and if my schedule will permit, I will be there. I've always said that I thought you were a good man, and this proves it. Members, let's give Michael a round of applause for saving a life. Michael, now?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, what? Mr. Englander?
He's used all his time, though.
I, no, I said, hold, hold his time. Yes?
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm here on, on the subject, we talked about the riots 20 years ago and where we are today. We're not much farther than we were. Talk to your constituents, they'll tell you. We haven't got any, we're sitting in here and we're playing the tape game where Mr. Zine comes over and takes the tape off, a gentleman sits here, and the officer comes over and tells him to get out and puts the tape back up. When people get tired of this, don't want to use the word dictatorship, but when they get tired of this abuse, they speak up, they speak out. We're also talking about the mayor's proposal to add to the parking tickets. Mr. Zine says he's against it. I wish, Mr. Wesson, you guys would stand up to the plate. If you're going to ticket somebody, ticket everybody across the board. I've been here for years talking about LAPD outside parking illegally. According to the chief of police, it's okay for LAPD to break the law. They are exempt from domestic violence. He says it's better to tell them not to beat your wife than to arrest them. Okay? He takes it upon himself that's brought to him, and he tells them, "It's okay to beat your wife, just don't get caught." They are exempt from DUIs. They don't get arrested, it gets brought to Chief Beck, and Chief Beck decides what to do with it. So they don't get tickets. Yet, we're talking, the mayor's talking about the city's bankrupt and how we're not going to, we're going to get all this revenue. The revenue is sitting there. He says that you shouldn't park illegally if you're poor. You shouldn't park illegally if you carry a badge that you swore to uphold the law. And I see Mr. Labange is having a conversation, Mr. Parks is having a conversation.
Thank you, Michael, and again, congratulations. Glenn Bailey, Dollhouse Dude. Glenn Bailey, Dollhouse Dude.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Glenn Bailey, I wanted to comment on two items. First of all, the transfer of the Office of Public Safety to the depart, the Los Angeles Police Department, which I think is, has merit. And my concern is, and I have great respect for Chief Beck, and that he would maintain the, or renew the memorandum of understanding with, between his department and other departments that OPS serves. My concern is, for those of you who know how the San Fernando Valley has been underserved during the past few years by Office of Public Safety, the promises that were made have not been kept. We would, we were told that OPS would have a presence in the regional parks in the San Fernando Valley. That has not been the case. In fact, they've been, in recent years, headquartered out of Griffith Park. I'm sure they've served Griffith Park very well. Unless they happen to be in the area, though, when a call was put out in the valley, it obviously, it takes a great deal of time to get there. Last summer, we were told that over the weekends, they had no officers out in the valley for the parks. That's unacceptable during the summertime. My other comment was regarding the elimination of the remote access for the public at Van Nuys City Hall. The San Fernando Valley is 40% of the city. The few thousand dollars, and it's arguable if it's even that, is going to be far surpassed by the costs of the public to get downtown, the cost of travel, the cost of parking, the cost of lost income, and therefore, the lost taxes to this city by having to come down when it's much more convenient to do it at Van Nuys City Hall. I commend Councilman Smith for initiating the program, and I hope you will see fit to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dollhouse Dude.
My name is Juan Alcalan. My internet name is Dollhouse Dude. And it only means that we all in the world have the right to have a roof over our heads. I cannot believe what I hear every time I come to these meetings. Billions of dollars dedicated to moving people fast from Los Angeles to San Francisco. The same people that don't even have a home. Why are we going fast to San Francisco? I don't know. There are some very nice views, sights, I don't know, sightseeing. Anyway, what I'm saying is, we need to emphasize what is basic. The people need democracy. They don't need to have the council members saying, "We have a great democracy." You tell that to the children, and it's not true. We do not have a democracy. A democracy will be here when everybody is able to own a little piece of the pie, and we don't have that. We live in a feudal system where your landlord is your ruler. And right now, the biggest landlord is the bank, the banking system, the cities, the counties, et cetera. They have made laws that are totally inhuman to human beings. It is, they have made laws that will throw a senior citizen out of their house for owing a few thousand dollars to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is, your time is up. Thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. Rosendorf for an announcement, and then, Mr. Clerk, we will go to item seven, I believe. Mr. Rosendorf.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Bill. You're disturbing the meeting. Come on.
Take him out. Take him out.
Come on. Keep it down. He's sergeantcy. Help him find his way back home. Mr. Rosendorf.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And... And I want my colleagues to know this and the public to know, our President of the United States, Barack Obama, just announced that he is supporting same-sex marriage. And for me, it's a huge move for our basic civil and human rights. Several years ago, I was in Washington, standing there on the steps of the Capitol, and C-SPAN took it. What we need as Americans is our basic human and civil rights. And gay people don't have that because our unions are not accepted enough for Social Security, for tax purposes, and that word "marriage" is codified in so many ways that it eliminates our opportunities that everybody else takes for granted. I do have tears in my eyes. It's something we've been fighting for forever, and we are so happy to see our President join us in our basic civil and human rights support. God bless you, Mr. Obama, for being there for us.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendorf. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's move to item seven. I think we held this, uh, Mr. Parks, because you wanted to be able to vote? No, this is, I believe that. And is, is this connected at all to item 21, or is that a separate?
21, you'd go with six.
That would be item six, sir, that's connected to 21.
All right. Any, there are no public comment cards on item seven. Mr. Englander, did you wanna say something, or can we just roll this? Okay, on item seven, no one's in the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number six, called Special for Councilmember Caretz. I might advise you that amending motion 6A, that's Parks-LeBonde, has been distributed and circulated amongst the members for their consideration.
Okay, on this item, item six, I have, I don't have to take public comment? Oh, good, it was satisfying committee. Mr. Parks, do you wanna start off, or Mr. Caretz? Caretz?
If he wants to start off, I could wait.
This item six, and then, Mr. Parks, will speak following your remarks.
Yes, well, I agree with the switch to having the elections run by Dunn, and I appreciate their willingness to do this and do it at a lower cost. I would like to be more responsive to the desires of the neighborhood councils, and I would like for those that have specific reasons to wanna opt out to be given the opportunity to do that. I don't think anyone is doing it for the, the reasons that council members might be if we were taking this action, which would be to continue in office without being contested. I think these are difficult positions. I don't think anyone's doing it for that purpose, but there are neighborhood councils that have perfectly good reasons to opt out, and I would like to see us leave them with that option as part of what we're doing today.
Uh, Mr. Parks?
Could we add 21 to the calendar? And then also, we'd like to have, there he is, right there. We'd like to just go through this in the sense of having a number of meetings.
Mr. Parks, can I get you to stop for one second? He's made a request that we take up item six and item 21 together.
Yeah.
Okay, I will take the cards at the end. Yes, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to start off with our general manager. And would you give us an overview of the current condition of the election and what the position of the current, your board, about the current 2012 elections?
I'm General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and I have Gracie Liu, who's manager for the election citywide. The Board of Neighborhood Commissioners recently took a position not to offer opt-out as an option for the upcoming elections. Their reason for doing so is they felt that the potential cost savings were minimal when compared to the potential threat that it poses for preserving a democratic neighborhood movement. So, they took that position. Our department has been in planning mode for the past four months, preparing to launch elections citywide between, starting in August. So, it is the department and the mayor's position also is not to offer opt-out as a option as well. And so, the department, uh, current position is not to allow opt-out, but of course, the council can take a position which I would faithfully implement.
Then, could you comment on your department's workload and your department's resources over the last couple of budget years, and how adding additional tasks at this time impacts you?
Well, our department, two years ago, was cut by roughly 55%. So, that has forced us to reposition our services and priorities. There are a large number of neighborhood councils who aren't being serviced adequately. The department wouldn't be able to implement elections had we not set roughly 120,000 as a set aside in this year's budget. So, that is being used to hire some temporary consultants that are beginning the planning work and the preparation. But the city council is going to take up the ordinance, and I believe the city council's also going to take up the mayor's proposed budget for an additional 650,000 that would allow the department to implement elections in 2012. But without the ordinance as well as the budget, the department would be extremely challenged to provide elections.
And then, the charter, in essence, although it's a play on words, gives the neighborhood councils a way to opt out by allowing them to be a selection versus an election?
Correct. There is language in the ordinance that allows neighborhood councils to conduct a public selection process, in which case the city would have minimal involvement. That's also being offered as an option.
Can you explain what the selection process is?
Um, I could ask the city attorney for some help here as well, but the main distinction between an election and a selection is that there is no secret ballot.
Okay. So, there is no requirement when we said 2012 elections, that everybody has to go to a secret ballot and have a formalized election process that's administered by a independent administrator and things of that nature?
Um, there is no requirement.
So, selection is far easier, and so, it's a matter of, what, a town hall meeting of sorts, and where people could come in and by expressing their interest, you could have a show of hands?
Well, we have not implemented the selection option until most recently, and that was with the last three or four recently certified neighborhood councils, because at the time, the city's laws only allowed the city clerk to conduct the elections. So, we were the only department that could assist neighborhood councils with the public selection process. So, basically, we crafted a procedure that allowed neighborhood councils to, uh, conduct their own method, but we still developed some guidelines, which had them go out to the public, you know, make an announcement that these board seats are available. So, there was a public outreach, uh, procedure in there. We wanted to make sure that even, even a public selection process, even though neighborhood councils are pretty much on their own to do it, that we wanted to be sure that they were being accountable to their stakeholders.
Okay. Excuse, you're from the city clerk? I'm sorry. Do we have a representative from the city clerk that did the actual survey?
Good morning, Council President and Honorable Members of the Council, June Legme City Clerk's Office. And with me is Jacob Wexler, the Chief of our Elections Division. Just to refresh your memory, in budget, when we were putting our budget together for 2011, 12, we were not funded to administer the 2012 neighborhood council elections. The council, uh, took a budget action to postpone the elections two years to 2014, and also instructed the city clerk to conduct a survey, uh, and, of neighborhood councils to accurately measure how they felt about neighborhood council elections and who should administer them. So, on October 28th of 2011, we developed and sent the survey to each neighborhood council board. We asked that each board actually agendize and formally vote upon the action and return their information to us by January 6, 2012. We also made available a separate, but similar, survey for individual stakeholders. So, we were able to take comments both from official board actions and interested stakeholders. Both these surveys were made available on the clerk's website. We feel the survey was the very first of its kind in terms of asking neighborhood councils directly how they preferred their elections to be conducted, in what style or methodology, and by whom. It was our hope that the results would assist the council and the city with the decision on how to address future neighborhood council elections. So, that's just a little background, and I'd like Jacob to now hit some of the major key points that the survey showed to us.
Jacob, before you get in there, could you give us a brief overview of the extent of the outreach?
Sure. Jacob Wexler with the Office of the City Clerk. We initially went to existing meetings of, you know, the alliances of neighborhood councils, all of them. On one occasion, let them know we were gonna go forward with the survey. We then conducted two sets of outreach meetings in each of four regions, that we invited all neighborhood councils to attend, to talk about, you know, again, that we were gonna do the survey and then provide more information and details about the topics that we were gonna cover. Then, after we, after we sent out the survey, we did four rounds of both phone calls and emails to every neighborhood council, and once we were having difficulty getting in touch with, we did additional contacts to those. And in the end, we ended up extending the deadline of the survey by a couple of weeks to accommodate some of the neighborhood councils that said they needed a little bit more time to get that board approval.
And they needed more time? It was, what, five questions on the survey?
Uh, there, I think there was around five questions with five to seven.
And how many neighborhood councils actually responded? Now?
We had 62 responses.
So, about two-thirds of the neighborhood councils responded?
Correct.
What was the general comment of those who chose not to respond?
Mr. Parks, last question, then press your button again.
Okay. What was the general response of those who chose not to respond?
In terms of why they didn't want to respond? There were a range, there were some who simply didn't want to, you know, respond, I mean, perhaps, they just didn't want to respond to our survey. I mean, there were some who made that decision.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Some chose to not respond, and others said they were not able to get a meeting together to take a formal action. Easy.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanna thank Dunn for its creative thinking, and I wanna thank the city clerk for working closely with you. I'm a huge supporter of no opt-out, period. Let's just go forward with this. It's great, 'cause I can tell you, my neighborhood councils really wanted the election in 2012. That's what the people expected. And the fact that we could do it in a way that is minimal amount of money, 125,000 is what you said. Obviously, we need the outside support to do it all above board, 'cause in my district, there are issues that always come up and situations that happen. But to put this on the table as it is is the right thing to do. And colleagues, I really ask for everybody's support not to go for the opt-out, but just go for it as it's being presented by the chair. I talked with Jay Handel, who's one of the leaders, and their coalition feels strongly. Stephen Box in the room here has been pushing it on his page, which shows real empowerment and community involvement. And I just hope that we have enough votes here to make this go forward as is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parks, you're back.
Thank you. Could you go back on the survey? And colleagues, we're on item 21 with the survey, and just give us a brief overview of what came out of the survey?
Sure. Some of the main conclusions that we were able to draw, one of the questions related to whether or not neighborhood councils wanted the elections to be postponed. Of the 62 that responded, 33 of the respondents were opposed to postponing the elections until 2014, while 29 were willing to postpone them. In terms of, of those who, who did not want to postpone, whether or not they would be willing to pay for all or part of the elections, 25 of those 33 were willing to contribute some or the full amount of the election cost. We asked the neighborhood councils who they would prefer to have administer the elections. Of the 62 respondents, 21 would prefer to have, prefer to have independent election administrators running the elections for them, overseen by some city department. 16 preferred to have the city clerk. 10 preferred to simply do it independently using the selection process. Seven identified Dunn as their first choice, and then eight had a combination or various other answers. Finally, of all the respondents, we also asked what their preferred election method was. Of the 62 respondents, 56 preferred some form of app polls voting, whether exclusively app polls, which was 39 of those 56, or app polls in combination with other methods. There only four of the respondents wanted to have some form of internet voting.
Okay. And let me ask the city attorney, you have two options as it relates to an ordinance today?
Yes, I've had distributed to the, to the council this morning the requests that came out of your committee, and that was basically to remove the language that was otherwise on page two of the draft ordinance that said the department shall be able to extend the terms to the 2014 calendar year. There's also one additional correction that's being made to the ordinance, and if you look at subsection D on page two, it's just clarifying in the second to the last sentence that it's the department who's being able to charge a manual recount fee. Previously, the document on file said the city clerk, so there's, there's a small correction there. Whichever is adopted, we have the appropriate ordinance for, for council to approve today.
Okay. What letter or number did you put on the one with the opt-out language?
I believe you only have the, uh, the one, the recommendation right now that came through for committee. So, that was the one that was distributed this morning. The CLA's office is holding the one that's just a correction to the currently, to the one currently on file.
So, the one we have before us is the one that shows to remove the opt-out language?
The one that was, the one, if you look at the one that was distributed this morning, if you look at item number C on page two, the last, it ends with the word "section," "section," and then period. Previously, the, the one on file continues with, or extended to the effective date for the results of the next regularly scheduled neighborhood council election scheduled for the 2014 calendar year. So, that language was stricken. So, you should see "C" ending with "section." I hope that clarifies this issue.
Thank you. And colleagues, I'd just like to bring one other thing to attention before I make a motion. Back on September the 24th, 2011, the city of LA held its neighborhood council congress. We had over 600 neighborhood council leaders in the city hall. They were addressed by the mayor, the city council, the city, several city departments and commissioners. At that 2011 conference, the overwhelming number of those who participated asked that neighborhood council elections go in 2012. A number of alliances has voiced their support of that. And the hearings that I held recently, this has been the number one issue, is to get the elections in place, and it gives the ability for neighborhood councils to either do a full election, but also a selection. And so, what I'm recommending today is, number one, that we move forward on the committee report that mandates elections through 2012, that the authority for elections for this fiscal, or for this round of elections be moved to the neighborhood, to Dunn, but go back to the city clerk in subsequent years, that we also approve the ordinance that is before you, that takes out the language of options and provides the movement, or that gives the authority to Dunn to move forward on the elections. Dunn has put a great deal of work in these processes so they can move forward. Clearly, they have to be done in a very short window, because we do not want them to confuse people with the November elections or the June election. So, it's gotta be done in that kind of a short window. And so, the other thing that we've asked the CLA and the CAO to do on number 21, is probably not going to be embraced by everyone, but because of the dollars in the city and the budget process, we've asked them to, the CLA and the CAO, to look at what would be appropriate small assessment by neighborhood councils that would help fund the neighborhood council elections. If you merely assessed them $5,000 per neighborhood council, you would raise almost $500,000 for that election process. And so, that's And so that's an area that is unfinished, but we've asked that discussion to go forward to assist the city's budget process in asking the neighborhood councils to be assessed for these elections and then get everybody on schedule for 2014. So I'd ask that we move items six and 21, and that's a summary of the two items that I just gave.
Okay, thank you. I have public comment cards. Kim Benjamin, Glenn Bailey, Joanne Garb, I think it is, please come forward.
Good morning or afternoon. I'm Kim Benjamin. I'm president of the Historic and Cultural Neighborhood Council here in downtown L.A. I've been a founding member of that board since it began, and I've served as president for the recent years. If you go back statistically, no neighborhood council in the city of L.A. in all 97, if you add up the votes in all the collective elections, has ever collected more voter response than we have. In fact, in the 2010 election, we were number three. I stand here to also speak to the two other facts, that the Westwood Neighborhood Council, which was number one in voter turnout this year at 1,780 approximately, or 85 respondents, filed a response to the survey and said, no thank you to the 2012, we'll opt out. We'll wait till 2014 and do what we did in 2010. The number-five vote-getter, which is Delank, also did the same. So if you look at our three neighborhood councils alone, we got one out of every six voters in the city of L.A. in all 97 to come to our just three neighborhood council elections. So in a democracy, or a republic in this case, when you look at the response, I hope you don't ignore that. We think an opt-out provision, a true opt-out, is appropriate. When the meeting was held in September, Councilman Parks, at that time, the general consensus of understanding was that the Clerk's office would be running it again in 2010, and they would still have the $1,002,000 approximate funding they had back then. The election process you guys ran during was wonderful. It was great. We all liked it. It was a great response, secureitized and welcomed, and it really activated the community involvement, and we found that to be great. We think that you're going from $1,002,000 to potentially $400,000, which is $3 to one, from 100-plus staff to 17, one out of five. You're doing it in 90 to 120 days and forcing a square peg into a short, round hole. It's a recipe for disaster, not a recipe for involving neighborhood councils and getting more people to come out and be satisfied and participatory. I think it's dangerous. If you're going to do it, let those penguins who want to go jump off the cliff by themselves. Don't take us with them. Give us an opt-out. Let them pay for it out of their own budgets. Don't ask us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Glenn Bailey. I'm board member of the senior neighborhood council, speaking as an individual. First of all, I do believe that we should stay on schedule with elections every two years. It used to be every year, and we staggered our board to accommodate that. Now with every two-years' elections, in order to have staggered, you'd have to have four-year terms. Not all neighborhood councils have done that. This situation is, was started a year ago in Budget and Finance when the money was taken from city clerk and a motion to cancel the elections until 2014. So you've heard from a lot of folks, a lot of neighborhood councils, Dunn has stepped up to the plate. They did not create this situation, but they have stepped up to the plate to make it as successful as we possibly can, and I believe that with the involvement of the neighborhood councils, and admittedly, it's a short timeframe, I believe that this can be successful. I've been involved with neighborhood council elections since 2003 with my neighborhood council and with many others. I do want to comment on the draft ordinance, that I think it's inappropriate in section 22.801.2, subsection D, to have a $798.80 per neighborhood council recount fee and $2.28 each additional ballot included in that ordinance. That's fine for city clerk, I suppose, but it should be removed in the reference to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Also, it's been recommended that the neighborhood councils retain their current funding level, and the difference between that and the $37,000 recommended by the mayor, the $3,500, be the monies that would be dedicated for the neighborhood council costs for outreach and election expenses at a minimum. Many neighborhood councils have already encumbered more money than that from this year's monies.
Thank you. Ms. Garb.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Joanne Yovanik Garb, West Hills Neighborhood Council. In the past, neighborhood councils were able to conduct their elections with the assistance of Dunn and an independent election administrator. In our neck of the woods, we had the South Valley Election Administration, the SVEA, to conduct the elections in seven neighborhood councils. We pooled our resources and discussed best practices. We had meetings before the elections. We had meetings after the elections. It was my first introduction to Gracie, working with her. Our IEAs were volunteers. Our particular IEA was a volunteer from the North Valley, and he was wonderful. He did not get paid. Also, we had vote by mail, and about half of our ballots were actually cast in that fashion. We did this at a cost substantially lower than it cost the city for the last election. With our budget cuts, taking us down to $37,000 that is proposed, and then to assess us $5,000 to hold the elections when we possibly can do it for much less, plus we are allowed to encumber some money for our, from this, if we have money left over from this year, it would be a substantial hardship on a lot of neighborhood councils to be assessed this amount of money. Over the past, the city clerk has done a wonderful job working with the city elections, but there is only one set of rules to abide by, and 15 council districts. We have almost 100 sets of rules and 100 different districts, so you're not going to be able to meet all of the demands. And what's supposed to be with the neighborhood councils is that we're supposed to be what our communities are, and that's how we do our rules.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I forgot to ask that we also, in addition to the two reports, that we move a motion 6A, which makes some technical adjustments to one of the committee reports. But again, one of the things I think that came out clear in most of our meetings is that it seemed totally inconsistent to have groups that are called neighborhood councils that are not following the democratic process. It's not about some of the things that have been mentioned, as to the cost and a variety of other things. It's the people that may want to vote that you're denying them that opportunity. We also heard a number of neighborhood councils have been without elections so long that most of their officers are appointed, and so they're not representatives of the body. They are representative of the prior board members. And so we think is that certainly, if we're looking at the entire system of 95 neighborhood councils, we need to go forward and bring them to a point where we can look forward to 2014 and continue to look at the elections on cycle. If we have all of these variations as it relates to opting out and all of the other systems that individualize, then we're looking at a system that is being driven by the lowest common denominator as opposed to the larger body. And I would suggest that we try to get the entire body of neighborhood councils in tow and elections so that we can move forward and give them the best response as it relates to this democratic process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parks. No one's on the queue. Let's, on this item, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Members, if there are no questions on item 30, it has been recommended that we deal with this in open session, and it's my understanding that, I guess, everyone in the appeals board was supportive of this. So if there are no questions on item 30, I'll take it up now. If there is, I'll do it later. Mr. Parks.
If we're going to do it in open, I'd just like to speak to the City Attorney. Folks, just have a couple of questions to find out if something was resolved.
Okay. Then I'll take that item up next. Now we're on item 22. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, sir. Item 22, called Special for Cards, and Councilmember Rosendahl. I might advise you that we do have amending motions, 22A, 22B, and 22C, which have all been circulated and are now before the members for their consideration.
Thank you very much. So this, Arnold Sachs, if you're here, I do not see him. Mr. Bailey is still here. Mr. Bailey, this is item 22. If you could please come forward.
I haven't seen the amendments. Perhaps the subject matter could be read so the public would know what the amendments are to this item. But with regards to special events, of the 50% contribution of $1,229,724, there's obviously a variety of special events throughout the city, some of which I participate in. The notable one, I think, in terms of the cost effectiveness, if you will, the dollar spent per person would be cyclovia. I think it's probably about 50 cents per person when you look at the, you know, 100,000-plus twice a year that's participating in the dollar amount that's in there. But I do have a concern to make sure that all the departments follow the city council's direction, the ordinance, that all groups are in fact nonprofit 501(c)(3), and that it's not a privately-run-for-profit-type business, and that the money is being, you know, the city is giving money for special event subsidy, and it's being, essentially being put in the pocket of a private entity. I'm aware of one special event, for example, where it's not a 501(c)(3), and I brought this to the attention of the Department of Recreation and Parks. Other people have as well, and yet the event has been continued to go on for several years. It happened to have been canceled this year. Maybe that's why, but we were never told. But going forward, I think it's important that you instruct every single department to get proof, evidence, that in fact, in order to get these city monies or this special event subsidy money, they are in fact a 501(c)(3) organization, and that needs to be documented in the public record so that we, the public, can verify its accuracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to speak on this item?
No, I didn't.
Okay. There are no other speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, that should bring us to item 30.
That is correct, sir.
And it's been suggested that this could be done in open session. So if I can get our City Attorney to report to the center table. We're going to do item 30. And I believe the one question is a Mr. Parks question. So Mr. Parks, would you like to?
I'd need to talk to them off-record because what I'm asking them would not be appropriate in open session.
Then maybe we should just go in enclosed. We'll do this in closed session. So sergeants, if you could remove everyone from the council chambers that is not supposed to be here. to be here.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair. They better and while we begin with an Iowa News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not gonna tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people, as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury, even if the injury is slight; threats of violence that look like they can be carried out; acts which result in property damage; any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage, directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Mr. Clerk, let us vote on item 30.
Very good, sir. In the case entitled Rosa Santiesta Bon versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1.495 million in settlement.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Parks? Oh, and that'd be fourth with. Mr. Parks?
Six and 21, fourth with.
Six and 21, fourth with.
And mine on the rail, fourth with.
Twenty...
Four.
Twenty-four, fourth with. Announcements? Or, oh, no. Mr. Clerk, I think we have to do postings on...
That is correct, sir. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they're posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused on June 7th and 8th. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on June 12th, 13th, 15th, 20th, and 22nd. And Councilmember Englander requests to be excused on June 20th.
Without objection.
The desk is clear.
Everybody rise for adjourning. Oh, I have one quick announcement. Rebecca Lu, in my office...
Yes.
...in two days will receive a graduate degree from USC in planning, so let's give her a round.
Woo! All right.
Okay. Adjourning motions. Mr. Joe Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rebecca, I know Dad. Mom and Dad are very proud of you. And congratulations, Rebecca. On behalf of CD-15 staff, Mom and Dad are really proud of you. Colleagues, today I rise in honor of and in memory of Joseph M. Martisich III. Joseph Michael Martisich III passed away on April 27th, son of the late Joseph M. N. Lee Martisich, and namesake of founder of the French Chardonnay Company and the Franco-Italian Packing Company. He was born in Long Beach at the U.S. Naval Hospital in 1946, though he considered himself a native of San Pedro, where he was raised and his family lived for nearly 100 years. He attended the Lawrence Seville School in New Jersey, class of 1964, and Stanford University, class of 68, earning his Bachelor of Arts degree. Mike was known for his love of wines with a palate that is unrivaled. In 1986, noted restaurateur John Papadakis designated the Wine Cellar Private Dining Room in addition to the renowned Papadakis Taverna as the Mike Martisich Room, as an homage of their lifetime friendship, and Martisich being the inspirational to build the private rooms. Martisich will be remembered as a political pundit for his extraordinary knowledge of wine, his adamant views about historic preservation and ecology. Martisich is survived by his sisters Stephanie Milde Martisich and Deborah Ann Martisich. A memorial funeral service will take place 1 o'clock on May 12th, this Saturday, at McNerney's Mortuary Chapel in San Pedro. Speakers will be Congressman Anjanis Hahn, Robert P. Ryan of the Boston Globe, and William Woodard Webb from Chapel Hill, North Carolina, among other notables from Northern California. In lieu of flowers, donations may be made to the Lee Martisich and Joseph M. Martisich III Children's Education Fund at the L.A. Maritime Museum in San Pedro. Thank you.
I second that for you, Joe.
Thanks, Tom.
Any more adjourning? Mr. Labusch.
Yeah, thank you very much. Harry Bakachadian, who many, many years ago, with his son, started high-tech automotives in the Silver Lake community, passed away recently at the age of 80. Harry was much loved by many people in the community. His son Coco runs the business with him. He is known, where knowledgeable people get together, get their cars fixed. He was a very great man, much loved. Survived by his wife, as well as four children and nine grandchildren. A request we adjourn in memory of Harry Bakachadian.
Thank you. Any more adjourning motions? No. Members, council is adjourned.